All right, good morning. It is eight thirty a.m. and we are starting off our second day of the Lewisville Annual City Council Retreat. We do have a quorum. I do not have any public comment cards or anything for today at this time, so we're gonna go ahead and move right into our icebreaker. And I think that is Mr. Alan Sims.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
Morning.
It's a pleasure to be here today. You all had a fun day yesterday, and it looks like we're gonna have some more fun today, so you ready for some fun?
Yes, indeed.
So, one of the things that is on our agenda today is a session about improving communication and increasing teamwork. And this is gonna be extremely helpful with that, but I thought there might be something that also helps improve teamwork and communication. And just for you all to know how your peers think about you, so I'm gonna ask-
Can I opt out of this one? I don't know that I wanna-
I'm gonna ask our city manager-
I didn't know about this.
No, to pull out a name.
Okay.
Hold that, 'cause, and what does the name say?
Patrick Kelly.
Patrick, would you come up here for a second? Patrick, stand next to me, please.
Why is the only word I'm coming up with right now is glorious?
So, what I want you to do is have a word of affirmation to Patrick. I admire you because, I respect you because, I appreciate you because-
Because you do you.
Okay, and then what we're gonna do is just go down, and this should happen real quick, but starting with you.
So, Patrick, I can appreciate that you're always, you come to every meeting very prepared, you've always done all your homework, and you ask a lot of great questions.
Wonderful. Ms. Cade.
Your turn.
Because you are genuine.
Wow, wow.
I appreciate you because you ask the hard questions and you dig deep.
All right, Mr. Meredith.
I would say you're your own person. You've got your own way of thinking, and that's great, that you don't have to be like the other five people, so.
Mr. Troyer.
Yeah, you definitely are your own person, and you do it, you do, you do it the way you think is best, and I really appreciate that.
Mr. Jones.
And I would say while you're your own person, you also listen to others, and you take in other opinions when you're-
Okay, we're gonna close it off with applause for Mr. Kelly.
I'll do it again?
Yes, who's next?
Kristen Green.
Kristen Green, I didn't line it up like that. Come right up here. Okay, so we won't, we won't explain the situation that I had. I had to go change my pants. Okay, all right, Patrick.
Oh, so I'll go first. All right, so Kristen, I think I've told you this before, Kristen is, you're intimidating in the room because you're so smart and you're quick. And I can't tell you how many times I've left the meeting and gone home and laid in bed and went, oh, this is what I should've said, but I appreciate you pushing back on what I put forth. That's it for me.
I admire you, I respect you, I appreciate you, I think, go ahead.
You know, I have the utmost respect for you, and you are, they talk about hiring to your blind side, you, you work my blind side. I know I can go to you and I can get the accurate answer. You complete me, dear.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic.
Well, now I gotta rework it. Now, Kristen, I completely appreciate all of your attention to detail, your focus on doing what's right by the community, regardless of what goes on in social media and other nonsense, and even making sure I get up and go to workouts on Friday mornings before this whole event. So, thank you so much for being a friend.
Yes, Mr. Meredith.
I would say just a very logical civil engineer mind, for sure. Your comments are, you know, definitely, I know where, what place you're coming from, so.
Okay, Mr. Troy.
I agree with that. Your logical approach to everything is just, is amazing, and I really appreciate it.
So, I'm gonna age myself a bit. We go back to P and Z and the old commercial with E.F. Hutton, when E.F. Hutton talks. So, whenever you're talking about anything, I'll just sit back and listen, and I'm like, okay, and learn, so I always appreciated that.
And applause for Ms. Green. Next, who's next? Bob Troyer, come on up here, Bob, and we're gonna start on the other end with you, Mr. Jones. And this is just, I admire you, I respect you, I appreciate you, I like the way you-
So, I mean, Bob is Mr. Lewisville. Before he was on council, he was everywhere, he's still everywhere now. And when we would meet at different places, Bob used to check in, and if you weren't on that check-in, you weren't really doing anything in Lewisville. So, Bob is very active in the community, and if you don't know Bob, you probably don't live in Lewisville.
Okay, Mr. Meredith.
I'd say similar state, I think definitely breaks, you know, certainly a different perspective to things from his, you know, two thousand fourteen, twenty twenty-five planned days and stuff like that, so.
Bob, I appreciate your commitment to individuals in this city. You really, really care. And I see that in the way that you're constantly listening and focused on the other people, you know, so many of us, we get in a position of leadership, myself included, and we're asked to be the one that speaks, but you're absolutely the one that listens.
Wow, I love your quiet, and I'm not gonna say I like, I love your quiet strength and the intelligence that you have to back up everything that you say. And you're a fascinating man to me. You just really are.
Okay, I feel like everybody's stolen all of my answers, but I, Bob is, he shows up consistently. If I'm going somewhere, I can almost always guarantee that Bob is gonna be there as well because he does have such a big heart and he cares so much, and he loves this city, and it really shines through, and I think he brings a lot of calm to maybe sometimes some of our chaos. But like, I love the way you put it, the quiet strength, yes.
I'm gonna rehash the themes here. Going last for Bob is difficult, but sometimes there's people who say a lot, but don't, don't say a lot. And there's people who, when they say two words, can convey a range of information and knowledge, so Bob, appreciate that about you. And when it comes to just being a fixture in the city, if you ever wanna be humbled, ride in the back of a truck during a parade with Bob, and you will say, a thousand people, Bob, Bob, I'm right here, I'm right here too, I'm also on council, but Bob, appreciate you, thank you.
Let's give it up for Bob.
One of my favorite things about you is your belly laughs when you really get tickled.
Mayor.
It's called executive privilege.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Hey, once again, we'll start with Mr. Jones on this end.
No, you know, the thing with TJ is he's multifaceted. He loves the job of being on city council and being on mayor. And like, I said it yesterday a little bit, where we take the job seriously, not ourselves. So, TJ's style of leadership is very easygoing, you know, he puts the council on focus when we need to, but we always have a good time. I mean, so it's, it's not work. It's service and it's fun, and you contribute to that.
I just appreciate the way you can always speak to people and make them understand what's happening, and it's, I think you're, you're such a great asset and a true leader.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact, the background, you know, he has from the last, you know, several years. I mean, it's, to have that knowledge is super great. I think a lot of people, also the fact that, you know, politics doesn't stay out, we don't know, we never know kind of what side of the table anybody's on, but I think that's one of your strengths, is you keep that, you know, in the background.
I like how you listen, because you truly do, and I love the brat side of you. That's my nickname for him, is the brat side. Yeah, okay, well, I thought you did that, I meant that. Hey, you know, it's the Italian in me that just came out, but.
I want you to understand that this is gonna be painful for me to say this, okay, but you really are a great leader of this council and this city. I think there's, there's no one that I can think of that can get up in front of a whole group of people and get people excited about this city. And I just think you do it so well and looks very effortless as well. I, you know, I just really admire that in you.
Mr. Kelly.
So, similar to what has already been said, I will tell you, and again, man, I probably shouldn't be telling you this, but I'll watch video of council meeting and try to take pointers from how you interact versus people just seeing the top of my head as I'm reading from my notes. You interact great with folks, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your depth of knowledge. You know, I can ask you just about any question, be like, oh, yeah, this was at a council meeting four years ago, I think it was Agenda Item D, we talked about that, three people were opposed, two or four, and even if it's not accurate, you sell it like it is, so I believe it, so, anyway, appreciate you, absolutely, yep.
Let's give it up for the mayor. Ronnie K., come on down. This is The Price is Right, come on down. Yes, okay, start back on the other end now.
Oh, yeah, that's just, I'm sorry, wasn't paying attention real quick. So, Ronnie, much like you said about me, I appreciate that you are, you're just you. And I know that if I need an answer to a question without any kind of filter on it, you're gonna, you're gonna give me what I'm looking for, so I do appreciate that, so.
Ronnie is my partner in crime. Yes, I'm in training. I love the authenticity that you bring to the council. Really, sometimes you say some things that- we're all thinking, but we don't necessarily wanna say, so we got Ronnie, we're just like, let her go. But I really do, I appreciate your, the fact that you have been here, and you have so much knowledge about Lewisville history and embracing where we're going. And I think that just having that and the relationships that you have in the community, that you're helping to bring everybody along with you. And I think you're doing a great job, and we have a lot of fun.
I think you do one of the hardest things for councils to do, and that is to respect the authenticity and what makes the city the city, while still understanding we have to change. And so, how do we grow and develop and change, but still keep what makes us Lewisville, and you are my lodestone for that.
I appreciate the fact that your, your knowledge of the history of Lewisville is great. I think having that perspective sometimes in these council meetings is just great, just to understand this place was here, this place was here, you know, this is why this is here, this is why we did this. That is just, that is just great to have that kind of knowledge for us to use.
Well, it's all been said before, but I do appreciate your knowledge and what you bring to, what you bring to the council for that, and also your, just your openness and willingness to say things. And what some of us would like to say, but are too afraid to, but you go ahead and do it, so, thank you.
To you, Ronnie, so, I mean, straight no chaser is probably, if it was a T-shirt, that would, that would be, but beyond that truth is also a heart, a heart of gold who cares for- a a a heart, a heart of gold who cares for the city, who cares for the staff. And you you demonstrate that all the time.
All right, let's give it up for Ronnie. Who else do we have? Brandon Jones, come on down. So, I understand he's rolling off the council, so this is your last chance to communicate with him, all right.
Oh, I just appreciate the 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 knowledge you bring when it comes to accountancy and just keeping us on track as far as the numbers go. And your your authenticity, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I would say that, but also say you you have an you have a you have a great knowledge kind of what's going on in the world and how to how to, you know, use that, what we're dealing with, you know, in the city. I think that's just a great, a great thing.
When I get unmoored and I need some direction, you're my guy. And and your ability to cut through the BS and get right to the core question or issue i- is invaluable to me.
I will say, like, I'll give it experience of the last city council meeting that you are not afraid to pull my reins back when I need it. Because if none of y'all saw it, he was tapping me and he looked at me, he goes, because you know, the closer I get, and I looked over at him, he's like, grab my, mm, don't go there. I need that. You are a balancer and a very intelligent balancer, and you have an innate ability to look at both sides and find the real truth in it.
So, I'm gonna say something similar to what you said about me. So, we I my my first memory of Brandon was when we were, we were both sworn into P and Z at the exact same time. So, our journey kind of started at the exact same time, even though you moved on to council a little bit before I did. But I've, yes, and you did. I've always appreciated what what I consider to be my weak side on the technical side, the the finance and the accounting and the numbers and all of that that aren't related to infrastructure. I mean, I I'm always listening for what what you have to say because you've you've brought things to the table before that have really changed my mind. And quite frankly, I'm a very stubborn person, so that's really hard to do. And it's really just because I respect you so much, you, I mean, you have the logic and the just the sensibility. We're really gonna miss you, and we, you know, we need to find somebody that can rein her in, keep her, hold her back during our meetings. And I also really, really appreciate your mad Excel skills.
Mr. Kelly.
Mad Excel skills, absolutely, so I'm gonna go there as well. The but but more broader than that, it's been an interesting probably four or five years in the country. And Brandon and I have had conversations that could have been very awkward and hard to have, but we've we've had these conversations. I really appreciate your your input and your feedback and letting me express myself without judgment, so I appreciate that about you, Brandon.
Let's give it up for Brandon. Last but not least, Mr. Meredith. Front and centers.
So, the best dressed councilman in the history of Louisville. You know, William's a quiet guy, but when when we're talking about certain things, when we're talking about construction or anything, I'm like, everybody kind of takes a step back because he understands it. You know, we actually worked together in the same building for for a little while. So, it, you know, wh- whenever we're dealing with anything construction, like, immediately I turn and look at William and see what he says because he knows what he's talking about and he's gonna help lead the city right. And I I just I just appreciate you, and I'm gonna miss you and see what outfits and what Louisville swag you come up with next year.
Mr. Troy.
I I like that about the dress, that's good, the dressing is good. But I do appreciate how thoughtful and and how logical you are in your approach to everything we do. It's just, I really pre, I really respect that about you.
Mr. Kelly, I'm gonna have the mayor have last words.
So, so similar situation, this is, yeah, you're, I sometimes actually think about before an event, what's William gonna wear? And I try to get parody, but you're always one level above at least, and the ascots you wear are just fantastic, those are great. So, but besides besides that, the yeah, just the quiet, similar to Bob, the quiet strength that you have in a room. And I know when you're quiet, it's not because you're disengaged, it's because you're contemplating the exact words to say that are gonna cut through in a precise manner, so I appreciate that about you.
Yeah, so I'll I'll say, I'll kind of echo all of those things that that he said as well. I I do feel very intimidated by the just, you guys, you and Cindy, y'all, y'all take, you take things and you make it so much fun, which is, you know, you and I have very similar personalities, but you have that creative side to you too that just makes things fun. And I think we need that. And on the other side, you also have that construction background, that practical side that I really appreciate. And I I'm always curious to hear what you're gonna say on, honestly, sometimes I'm like, okay, is William gonna agree with me? Or is he gonna, you know, because we do have a similar background. But, you know, I I, if you were gonna push back on me, I I would definitely listen because I do respect you.
I gotta say quiet strength too. And you are very pragmatic, and you would think that your personality tended to be very analytical. But you have a wicked sense of humor, very quiet, and I love that because you just never know. But I got a high respect for you very much, so.
And Mayor, clean with us.
William, your your attention to detail and your ability to balance a lot of competing interests in the room as well as kind of be that leavening agent. I mean, you've got some, got some folks that get a little little off the rails, myself included. So, being able to kind of be that center point for us is huge. And your your tremendous amount of care for the city. If there's if there's anybody I see at more events than me, it's you. And and you are just, you're always out there doing what needs to be done, elbows deep and doing the work. And and I cannot thank you enough for being that example.
Let's give it up for Mr. Meredith. The whole intent of that was, as we communicate how we feel about it, it does great, it it helps us to really increase our teamwork. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Mayor, since we had one item left over from yesterday, I would propose we start with that, if you're all right with that?
Yep, all good, let's go ahead and move prioritization of twenty twenty five vision plan and unfinished items and discussion of those strategic focus areas. We've got Gina McGrath and Ashley Carlyle available, and take it away.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Okay, so as Claire mentioned, we are going to go over the status of the twenty twenty five vision plan. We're going to discuss some of the items that were identified as partially complete or unfinished. And then we're also gonna talk about your strategic focus areas. Maybe we are. Melissa, could you, thank you. Okay, so I'm not gonna go over all of this right now. You heard a lot of this yesterday in the Louisville twenty thirty five presentation. But just for those who may not have been here yesterday or are unfamiliar with the plan, it was approved in twenty fourteen, work on it started in twenty thirteen. Then in twenty nineteen, the five-year touch point began. So, that actually, again, started in twenty nineteen, went throughout the span of twenty twenty and the height of COVID. And then the official update occurred in twenty twenty one. And as you heard yesterday, there was over four thousand touch points in that process, so significant public engagement there. And then coming into the more recent years, we did receive an implementation award in twenty twenty from the American Planning Association. This plan has actually received multiple awards, but in particular, we wanted to point out this one in terms of implementation. We've made a lot of progress on this plan. And then every year, we publish an annual report, and I believe you actually have this report in your packets. And for those that are watching online, this was sent to your mailbox earlier this week. And this just provides those annual updates on those big moves and strategic moves. So, where are we at today? We've accomplished the majority of the plan items, about seventy seven percent. That does include some that are complete but ongoing, and then a few items that were determined to be not feasible as well. That leaves thirty eight action tasks that remain. So, this will look familiar to you, but I'm just going to explain it in a little more detail for, again, for those who may not be familiar with the plan. So, what you see in this image here is a ranking that we asked council and staff to complete. So, the further column on the left over there, that is your big move or your strategic move, that aligns with what you see in the vision plan. And then there are goals for each of those big moves as well. The action priorities, those were the items that you were asked to score. Status update, the majority of these that you saw were partially complete. We did have a few where we have not made a whole lot of significant progress. But for the most part, we've done work on all of these. And then on the score column, you were asked to score these on a scale of one to ten with one being little to no importance or potentially not feasible, and then ten being critical and urgent. And then you were given the opportunity to select up to three action priorities to give them an additional five points of special consideration. So, this is just if something was really, really important to you, you could give it that extra push. And then what you see on the far right there is that total score when we add all of these up. So, when we compare the rankings between council and staff, council did, on average, score these priorities a little bit higher than staff. That average was seven point zero four, and then staff's average was at six point five three. So, on the next slide here, what we're gonna do is we're gonna show you the comparison between those two lists. Anything that you see a star icon next to means it was identified as a top priority by both council and staff. So, we're looking at those as more of our consensus items. But before I do that, I wanted to call your attention to something that was discussed yesterday in the Louisville twenty thirty five presentation. There was a vision statement that was updated during that touch point, and it said, by twenty twenty five and beyond, Louisville will be a community that focuses on resource management, connectivity, diversity, and growth. And so, when we talk about these action priority priorities, you're gonna see a lot of these fall into those categories. A lot of them fall under your big moves, a lot of them fall under the strategic focus areas. So, we're really making sure that we're aligned across all of those points. So, there's a lot of text on this slide, I'm not gonna sit here and read through all of this. We are going to go over these in detail here in just a minute. But basically, you have seen these before, this is everything that you ranked. On the left-hand side of the screen, this is council's top scored list. And again, everything with a star here is indicated on both council's list and staff's list. One thing I wanted to point out here is that when you compare council's list to staff's list, the number one item was the same on both. It's that top one there. Develop a strategy for maintenance and rehabilitation of apartment complexes that improves our residents' quality of life. You heard a presentation about this yesterday. In fact, the majority of retreat has been scheduled around your strategic focus area. So, you've you've heard about a lot of these initiatives already, but we're just gonna be talking about some of those more specific concrete achievable items today. So, just, I'm gonna quickly go down the items that were consensus items. Again, I'm not gonna read all of them, but I I'm gonna use council's list as I go down this here. So, the second item that was on both lists is evaluating additional activities that would bring people to Old Town, continuing to expand our nuisance abatement programs for multi-family and our hotel properties, improving the access and connection of all residents to jobs, education, and resources, providing free public Wi-Fi at our parks, expanding the dialogue with communities of color to understand their experiences and identify ways that we can improve Louisville, using data to identify areas where we really need more engagement between our community and our staff, developing an inventory of retail establishments, involving our entire community in implementation of Louisville twenty twenty five. So, this is really important, this is not just developing twenty twenty five, this is engaging them in the implementation. And you did hear a little bit about that yesterday in the twenty thirty five presentation. And then the last one was securing adequate green centerpiece resources, so, and we're looking at Lila and the Nature Center there. So, all of those items you see on the right-hand side on staff's list as well. And what we're showing you here is we've marked all of your top ten items in green if we want to use that as our basis for discussion today. But then you see those remaining items just below that, so you can see where that cutoff point would be if you want to discuss what we want to do with those items. And so, I think, I I, one other thing that I wanted to talk about on this slide was the items that were not starred. So, just because it's not a consensus item doesn't mean it's not important, I just wanted to call those out so you're aware of where councils and staff's rankings differed a little bit. So, on the council's side, item number eight, related to identifying data to monitor issues in our group populations, wayfinding, item number ten, wayfinding messaging and informational materials. And then item number thirteen, continuing the conversation on racial inclusiveness and ideas that make this area a place where we want to live. So, again, that's not to say this wasn't important to staff, it's just that it fell differently on that priority list. And then on staff's list, the items that staff scored a little bit higher were item number three on the right-hand side, related to Central I thirty five, this is related to redevelopment incentives. Then item number six, related to developing a plan for landfills. And item number ten, related to all gateways, this is just improving those gateways to provide those distinct entrances. And at this point, I think Gina is going to walk you through some of the different options for how we can look at this data.
Before we go, can I ask a question about this? It's gonna, I'm trying to understand the star system here. So, we have data-driven organization, there's no star on council's side. Does that mean it wasn't as important as other things to council? Because the numbers seem to indicate that it was it was higher than some of the ones that are starred, right?
So, what the stars mean is just that that particular action priority, not necessarily the big move, that the action priority was identified in the top thirteen items on both lists. And here in just a second, we can actually, I'll advance to the next slide.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, before we move, can you go back? Because this is where I'm confused, because when I look over on the staff's side, if I'm lonely with a question here, I'll maybe I'll follow up with you afterwards. Because when I look on the staff's side, I can see there's a star by data-driven organization, and it's it's high, it's it's looks appropriate. But on the on the council's side, I see something with a star, like Economic Vitality, number nine, is lower ranked than data-driven organization, so I don't know why that got a star, but item eight didn't. So, with them, both lists.
Yeah, if it has a star, then it, both staff and council rank ranked it high.
So, on council's list, you see that Economic Vitality, one, number nine, related to the developing an inventory of retail establishments. If you look on staff's list, that would be number eleven. So, it is, it's on both lists, it's just in a different order depending on how the the scoring averaged out.
That one has a star on both, I'm going back to Patrick's question. A data-driven, number eight, no star, but eight point four three for the council's side. And then data-driven, number nine, but seven point three eight, and a star for staff.
Those are two different action priorities.
Oh, got it, got it, oh, it's the, it's the priority in the middle.
Sorry, I, yes, I should have explained that, the the order of them is different. The the only thing that stayed the same between the two lists and the order that you see them is the top one. So, that was the one that ranked the highest on both lists. Everything else is reordered by the score that averaged out. So, council's score, that's your average across all seven of you, staff's, that's the average across all twenty or so staff. So, that order is different. Yeah, so that, if you look at column, the left-hand column on both charts, that is essentially that that final ranking.
It's the action priority that's different, not not the, okay.
Correct, sorry, I should have clarified that, I understand the confusion now.
I haven't had any coffee. Okay, okay.
So, as Ashley said, there are a couple of ways that we can look at this. We can look at just your council ranking, and we can just talk about it. We can look at just staff's, or we can look at an average of council and staff. If we look at this average, that means a couple of yours fall off and a couple of ours go on just due to the rankings and where they now are prioritized. So, I wanted to kind of get your thoughts on, how do you want to look at this? And do you want to kind of take into consideration the differences between staff and talk about that? Or would you like to just focus on council top priorities?
Personally, easier for me to digest having them both kind of separated because then I'm like flipping back and forth to try to see which ones, or if you want to point out which ones fell off. or if you want to point out which ones fell off with the combined list. What fell off?
So on the combined list, number eight of yours, which was identify data to use in monitoring issues among populations and group quarters, such as senior living centers, that would fall off.
Okay.
And my, I think our staff rated that a little bit lower because it seems a little hard to digest and hard to say whether or not we're successful. We really don't know what that means as well. So this one seemed a little, how do we, how do we go out next year and do this?
Which one was that?
It's number eight.
On our list.
Is that the only one that fell off?
No, also number thirteen, which was your bottom one. Continue the conversation of racial inclusiveness and ideas, which will help Lewisville be the kind of place where all residents want to work and live. I think that one fell off only because we have number six, which is expand dialogue with communities of color to understand their experiences and identify actions to improve Lewisville as a place for them to all. Those are similar to us. So I think it was, do we need both?
And to add on to that, when we're talking about items falling off, what we're trying to get at today is what do we need to focus on in fiscal year twenty twenty-six? So what is our immediate priority going into next year's budget? And then some of these other items we can focus on in Lewisville twenty thirty-five. So just because it falls below that line doesn't mean we're not going to do it. But what we're really trying to get at is, what do we need to focus on next year? What should we be looking at in Lewisville twenty thirty-five? And then if there are a few that we need to remove, we can consider that as well.
I also wanted to point out that this is aspirationally to be done in all future council retreats. The reason why is because you have your short-term goals, your middle-term goals, and your long-term goals. So your long-term goals are going to be your vision plan, right? When we do twenty twenty-five, it's all of the things in the plan. You also will have that in twenty thirty-five. What we want to do is bring, then you have the strategic focus areas. Those are kind of your middle-range plans. Those are like, we want council, we want staff to work on the mall. Well, we know that's not necessarily going to hit next year, and we'll get it done next year. But it is, you know, in the next five years, we need to be actively working on that. But a lot of these things are very granular. And staff really has been kind of picking and choosing how to prioritize things along the way. Now, we, we know kind of what your priorities are, but you really don't have, you, you haven't had a real strong say in, hey, this needs to pop up before all the other stuff. This allows you guys to have that opportunity where when we get twenty thirty-five done, we're going to put the hundreds of priorities down, or action items down. And every year, we want to show you where we are and show, and basically let you guys reorganize it based on what y'all's priorities are and what the community's priorities. So that's, we're starting that process now, just so you understand. But we have a bunch of to-dos that are left. And so that's what we're trying to gather on. What should we try to do in the next fiscal year if we can fit it into the budget? Just so you see the big picture of what we're trying to do long-term.
So at this point, you want us to kind of talk through some of these things and what are... I, I have one that I'd like to talk about. Are we, are we ready for that, or?
I think what we need to know first is, are you guys wanting to work off of, like, which, which list do you want to work off of?
I'm fine with the average.
I like the average.
The average, okay. Okay, so then...
Perfect. So if you will bear with us for just a second, we're going to go ahead and pull up a spreadsheet. And what we can do is we can mark these items as something we want to focus on in twenty twenty-six, or if we want to flag them as twenty thirty-five items, if we want to remove some as well. So we're going to go ahead and pull that up now.
And while we're doing that, I will just add that. The very top one, like we said, was the staff top one and council top one and dealing with multifamily and rehab. And that one, we've done a lot, you know. Since this plan, we've had multifamily inspections now. You know, we've done, where we talked about affordable housing. So we are constantly working on this one. It says partially complete because it's really, are we ever done with this?
It will never be complete.
This one, and sometimes that's hard for staff because we go back and we're like, okay, are we, did we complete everything in the Lewisville twenty twenty-five plan? Yes and no. I mean, we've made a lot of headway, but we haven't solved affordable housing for the world. You know, I mean, that one's going to be a continuing kind of mission that we have. So when you see partially complete on a lot of these, it's like, we're making headway, but we just want to make sure that you want us to continue in that vein. That's one. But then there will be some more as we're going through this that we're like, we're not really sure what this means or when we will be successful. So those are the kind of things we want to talk through as we're getting those.
I would, I would, I appreciate that sentiment. I would, I mean, we're running across the same things in business, right? You have things that are strategic, that are just things you do, they're ongoing, and they're not completely, you have things that are objective. You go through and say, I can measure this as objectives. It would, it would help me, not for this meeting clearly, because we're already down the path. But I think those are different buckets of things to consider. Because I'd hate for something just to linger on a, on a, on a plan that's more strategic focus, where do you want us to focus strategically? But here's the things we can accomplish in a year, and that's how you measure those things. But it would help me to see those as separate buckets.
You know, it's even, as we're thinking through this and we're about to develop the twenty thirty-five plan, it's a great idea to figure out how to write that plan in, in that exact way.
Quantify.
So that each year, we're really checking off things that we can come back and talk about rather than have some of both in, in the list.
To your point, people are going to see this partially complete and the optics are poor, right? It's like, well, what'd you do for the past ten years? Well, a lot.
A lot, yeah.
That's right.
Right. Melissa, can we jump over to that average tab, please? Thank you. It'll be the third tab on your spreadsheet at the bottom, final ranking averaged. And so one thing I want to point out here that I didn't point out on the presentation is that those ten items that we flagged as consensus items, when we averaged the scores, they ended up being your top ten items as well. So what you're seeing on this average list are those same ten consensus items. And then over in column H, just in case you're curious, if you wanted to know the difference between how council ranked it versus how staff ranked it, that's your difference there. So we just flagged a few of the larger gaps. I say larger, to be honest with you, staff's and council's rankings were very closely aligned. We mirrored this process after our Blue Ribbon process. We also found in that process that, again, staff and that committee were very closely aligned as well. But we did just want to provide you with a little bit of, of extra information here. And then Melissa, if we can drop that zoom down maybe to about ninety percent or seventy-five percent, that way we can get column I in there as well. Thank you.
So on the discussion, we just wanted to make sure this, developing the maintenance, I think this one, we all agree, we want to look at that for next year. We want that to be objective for next year.
Which one was that?
Number one, develop a strategy for maintenance and rehab of existing apartment complexes.
Yep.
Yes.
Can I, can I get a clarification on that? So that's really, it says develop a strategy. So there's all of the, we, we've done several things like multifamily inspection, which would be part of that strategy. But it's a, it's developing of a strategy, not like executing something other than it's coming up with a plan of attack, it sounds like.
Is there, can we, is there a way to go through our existing older, existing multifamily and like we do with the roads and prioritize? I hate to say the worst is up at top because they have all this that needs to be done. Is there any way to do that? I'm not talking about individual inspections. I'm talking about looking at the property as a whole.
Yeah, I think that could...
And kind of putting it on a priority list.
Sure, I think that could be part of the strategy that we come up with. I mean, I think we'd have to address all multifamily. But I think part of the strategy can be focused on the worst and how do, how do we, when we say quote-unquote worst, what does that mean? Right.
Code enforcement violations.
Is it age or code enforcement? Is it complaints, calls for service, all those things? We can, we can work through that.
I agree that, that, I, I think having a strategy is important because we, I, I don't necessarily think as much as we want to have, you know, we want to focus our, even our, just our affordable housing tools that we have. We, we would love to see rehab versus new. It also, like, we have to, we almost kind of have to wait for them to come to us. So if there's a way that we can build a strategy that would hopefully get them to the table, the target, the ones that we are, like Ronnie said, the worst of the worst, and get those to the table, I think that's, that would make a huge quality of life impact. So I, I think the strategy is, is probably going to have to be, you know, going to have to have a real sharp pencil on that.
Okay.
One and two play together pretty well. I think you almost got to look at both, both sides. It'd be almost nice if you had a, like a perspective sheet for each one of these properties and some of the bullet points for, you know, maybe perspective, affordable housing folks. Like, okay, well, we already got ideas on, you know, like Basswood, you know. I, I know that one because I went, you know, I was on a ride-along and just saw how, how bad that property is. So something like that, just, okay, we already know this, this, you know, this, this needs this, this, and this. And, you know, okay, you already got a kind of a idea, a starting point for some of these developers.
So with that, we could talk about the nuisance abatement program and just expanding it to multifamily and hotel motel.
Let me pop in real quick. My concern on how, I'm reading number one, and there's a couple of ways I can read it. I can read it specifically for affordable housing, or I could read it for everybody. And quite frankly, I don't want to be spending money on maintenance and rehab of facilities that are supposed to be handled by the private sector. Now, I get we have some like Basswood that have gotten away from us over the, over the years. And I, I would, you know, I, I think we have a list of all of our affordable housing properties. Does that list have when they're going to fall off?
Yes.
So that, to me, is where I would be wanting to focus this conversation is, how do we, how do we focus on keeping that stock of affordable housing? And then for the strategy for maintenance and rehabilitation, what, what I, what I'm concerned about is you have somebody that goes, oh, well, the city's going to backstop me.
I think that there's a difference between, so with our multifamily inspection, our, they should be meeting minimum code at this point. So it's how to get those developers to reinvest for, beyond just minimum requirements. So I'm, I definitely agree with you. We shouldn't be incentivizing anything that is to meet minimum code requirements. It's their responsibility. But I guess that's, that's a question for council. Is there a desire to try to use tools to get rehab of some of these if there's no affordable housing provided? Is that something you guys want, or is that not what you're interested in doing?
If that, if that apartment complex does not provide affordable housing and they meet code, I, I don't know if I want to spend time on them. Now, I, I, if, if what we're saying here is that we don't think code creates a space that's good, then maybe we need to look at code and up that. But if, I mean, the whole point of code is to create a minimum standard, right?
Right, like there's a safe...
So if our minimum standard's not good enough...
No, I mean, like, I think having a safe environment where you're, yes. I think that we have, codes are fine for that. If you're wanting a renovated interior where people have an elevated sense of living, that's above and beyond what code is, right? So, and I don't know if that's, or having, you know, your walls on the outside of Basswood Manor, let's just say, I mean, I haven't looked at every inch of it, but they pass code. But do you want to have them clad with some other type of material? Do you want to have something looking nicer in that neighborhood? I, I want to make sure I understand where...
If, if that will help us maintain the affordable housing stock that we have, and there's a way to work with them on that, in that arena, great. If it's a building that's making money, and, and these buildings make money, and we want to elevate that experience, I, I, I think that's different. Now, if they come to us and say, hey, we want to provide affordable housing options, then, then let's look at that. But again, if they come to us and say, well, I want affordable housing at eighty percent, uh-uh.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah.
I agree with that. This is, that one, I think we're, now we're talking about capitalist markets. There's the others, it meets code, it meets our, it meets our requirements of standards. The extent that we have buildings that we think are below that standard as a city, where instead our standard's higher, I agree, this should be addressed as a code issue, not a, not a one-off issue per, per building.
Yeah, but I mean, not everybody, I don't have granite countertops.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I guess that the comparison is with, and I'm not trying to push this. I'm just saying, like, we have aging shop, strip centers that we provide incentives just to make it look nicer in our community. But you don't want to do that unless affordable housing is provided in multifamily, is what I'm hearing. Okay.
Also, because I actually think doing, doing that would actually be the opposite because if we, if we helped them kind of spruce up their property, they're going to raise their rent. So it's actually going to have the opposite effect of what we're looking for.
Fair enough, okay.
Thank you. Anything more on one and maybe two?
I, I've got some questions on two. It's just partially completed. Where are we?
So we are, with our CAT RMS system, we had to put that on hold. So we, we, we never, so basically what we ended up having, Chief Clemens had come to you, presented a very robust system where it was like not even multifamily or hotels. It was all properties across the, the city. And there were triggers. If you had X amount of nuisance crimes and you would receive a letter, you'd be put in kind of like an oversight process if you didn't correct them within a period. And then ultimately, you could, we could file a lawsuit at the end of the day. But the idea is to get compliance, not to try to file lawsuits. At this point, when our new chief came on, we were in the middle of a CAT RMS switchover with the data, you need to be able to get those numbers that say whether or not you're, you fall into whatever category of enforcement. We didn't have that data readily available. So he came on, we got geographic accountability put out into the public. And so now we're to the point where they're fine-tuning that to bring it back to you to a workshop. So I would expect probably in the next three months, three months, that we would be bringing that back to you to have a fine-tuning with our chief, having looked at it. I think the reorganization of NROs and co-care will also play a role in that. But also the geographic accountability, who's responsible for carrying that load? I think Chief Rollins needs to look at all of that.
I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to why some of our sit-and-sip places...
Are what?
Bars. Are not up there, some of...
Yeah, so this was what was in the original twenty twenty-five. But you guys after, or not, five years ago, when you had this action step, that's what was included. But you guys actually, we broadened it the last time we went to council. So it would be more than just those items.
The one suggestion I would have is like where we have all these partially completes is maybe ongoing, since it's something that's going to be continuing. So partially complete kind of says, at some point, there will be, it will be complete. Ongoing kind of lets us know, like, this is something that's going, and we can kind of touch points on what those issues are throughout the year in presentation as well.
Okay.
So then we have number three, which was involve the entire diverse community in implementation of Lewisville twenty twenty-five and in service on city boards and commissions. You heard our plan for twenty thirty-five and getting implementation, I mean, and, and that engagement. And we have question here more about the service on city boards and commissions. We, how far do you want to push that? I mean, we could say, you know, in every board, we want a certain makeup. Is that what we're talking about here? Are we talking about just naturally occurring? You know, trying to do more engagement in those efforts? It's really, what does successful look like here for us?
I'll, I'll jump in first here. I think, I think that second part is a natural output of our efforts to community engage. So I don't think, I wouldn't, I would prefer to put effort to engagement and let the engagement naturally drive the interest in boards rather than artificially constructing quotas. That, that's what, that's what I'm hearing. That's, I think that's a better outcome. And this goes back to, you know, what, how do you make sure that you're not, you don't have a bias in these, in these things, right? And I know Claire, you know, I've talked about this many, many times, and I've talked about this with everybody. And we found that we actually get great outcomes from our employee application process by striking anything that would indicate, could indicate racism, the city, religious, whatever, addresses and names. I'm going to put forth again, this will be the last time I do this, promise to guys for three years. I've tried every year for three years, and I stand alone on this. But if it works so well for city, I would like to see that same thing tried for boards and commissions. And that's not an effort to try to marginalize those groups. It's an effort to try to, to, to acknowledge, I believe we have implicit bias. And it's an effort to try to get around that implicit bias. I don't know why we think our HR groups, who are trained, can, are subject to implicit bias, and managers who are trained are subject to implicit bias, but council members who, you know, I'm going to soften this down, won a popularity contest, don't have implicit bias. So that's, that's my thought on the process. So I'd like to see us remove things that might cause bias to adjust, one. And then two, I think if we do our community engagement correctly, we do get a, a boards that are made up of, of, of the demographic that reflects our city.
So, I'm sorry. So I, I think that I agree with Patrick that... better engagement with a community as a whole will drive more applications because ultimately like we're not forcing people to apply for these boards. We have to, you have, they have to take the first step to, to put in that application. To me, honestly, though, I, I feel like the word diverse can mean all sorts of things. So when I, you know, when I'm looking at those applications, I'm, you know, what I always say about the council is that, you know, we, we all have like different backgrounds, not just with, you know, our personal life, but with our professional lives that, and that really just kind of give us all a different perspective. And I think that that's really important on every board and commission as well. So I'm looking at, you know, what does this person do for a living? How long have they lived here? Some of that demographic data also, are they a woman? You know, are they a person of color? I, some of those things, I, I, I think it's important to have that, not that I'm necessarily picking off of that, but really I, I am looking to try to get as diverse a group as possible. So I, you know, I don't mind having that, that information on, but anyway, to my point, the, the only really action item I see for city is just to, to engage a much broader engagement, which I think we're talking about doing through the Louisville twenty thirty-five plan anyway. So I guess it would be kind of naturally occurring in fiscal year twenty twenty-six as well. Maybe there's another action item from that. I don't, I can't think of one. I, I'm not quite sure what that would be.
So I'll, I'll jump in real quick because I, I disagree with Kristen and Patrick on this one. I think how you measure it like, is basically we, we have the census. We know, we know what our demographics look like. Now, it doesn't mean that we're going to match that perfectly. But we know we have, we're underrepresented by some folks because those people aren't haven't showed an interest, or maybe just don't have time or don't, don't know. Probably it's more that they don't know. And I think the engagement things that we're going through are terrific. So how do we, how do we gauge success? Is, how many people, how many people from these communities are applying? We know that those numbers are low. So, so we're trying to engage Latino community. We, we, I know we've been trying to get someone from the Chin community involved in the city as well. So we just look at the, the numbers, tell, tell the story of how diverse we are or aren't. And it's not, it's not about making quotas. It's just about tracking, okay, here's, here's where we're making strides, here's where we're not. And so we're trying with the Latino community. So I would hope in the next year or two, we'll see more people applying for boards. Now, does that mean you get on the board? No. But that, but once you get that going, because when I got, when I, when I got here, they were searching for their people on the boards for like ten years. There was no interest in that. And now we're getting, we're, we're getting people who are excited about the boards, which is great. But we want to make sure that our boards look like our community as much as we can. And we can't, I'm not suggesting that we pick people based on race, ethnicity, or gender. But I'm saying we need to find a way to attract those folks. And how we, how we count that is how many people are applying. Then once, once we get people applying, then how many people are we putting on the boards? Then it'll be back to the council to kind of take a look at that and make sure we look like, we have people who look like our city to give us the best, I guess I gotta go Louisiana here, gumbo in this city that, that, that makes, that, that gives us the flavor that we need and the representation that we need. So it's kind of pretending like that doesn't exist, doesn't help. You know, just use the numbers.
I'd like to say, when I came here, I'm going to piggyback off what he said. We had very few applications and we were appointing people to multiple boards. In, in the last four years, because of engagement, it has been working. People, we have more applications. Now we actually have a pool, a real pool in which to draw from. And the way that it's broken up and we pair up to place people on board, not everyone that has filled out an application has been appointed and some won't be appointed. Because we do our due diligence in vetting who we put on these boards. And, and the only way you get to know them is by experience on other boards with them in the community and actually sitting down and interviewing and talking with them. So what has been going on in the last couple of years is working. It is working. Do we need to keep it up? Yes. And I think once we get the volunteer program up and the engagement and stuff going, it is going to have that natural flow.
I think Citizens University, I think, has made a big difference. So we need to keep doing that. It's been awesome.
I do want to, I do want to chime in here because I think actually Councilmember Jones and myself, we're actually not that far apart. I don't, I don't take that as disagreement because I think the, the priority, I'm all for. Absolutely, I think that's my priority. And I think to Councilmember Jones's point, understanding how our boards break up across whatever lines you want, age, gender, racial, religion, whatever. I think those are great things to just kind of keep in mind and say, do we have an opportunity to better engage with a particular group? So I love the action priority. And especially to your point, diverse can mean lots of things, which I appreciate that. And that's, and I appreciate the, frankly, the diversity of the diverse comment of there, rather than saying it's going to be around a particular cohort of, of our citizens. So I don't think we're that far apart. I'll give, I'll give a specific example, though, again, for the, the redaction of names. There's, there's people that we know from social media. Maybe they'd be great. But if I see a name on there, my, my gut is, no, I don't want to do that. Or maybe they, they posted something that, that hit me a wrong way. They didn't mean to. And, you know, you immediately filter them out. So it's not just around filtering out for, for things like, like religion or gender or whatever. I think we may be missing some folks who could, who could help at least get them past the first level, past the immediate rejection cycle into the second level. When you sit down and talk with them, go, you know what? Yeah, we may not agree on this or didn't like your approach, but you actually do have some valuable input. So it's not, it's a, it's a way to prevent a filter upfront on lots of different areas.
Well, I, I did just want to point out really quickly that on the, on a application for a board or commission, I believe that the demographic questions are optional. You don't have to, so a lot of times we, we don't get that information anyway. I mean, I'm, I think we should ask, but I, I don't know. I guess it's not a good thing to make it mandatory to answer those questions either, but we, I mean, I, we don't get a hundred percent of that.
Well, we can continue to make it a focus on engagement and when we have vacancies on boards to try and get word out and, and hit all of our demographics as much as we can in that vein. So we just wanted to talk through that and kind of what that meant to you.
And I'm, I'm going to throw just a couple more points onto this, that I, I think what, what muddies the water for me, and I, I, I agree with Patrick, I don't think we're as far off as politics would make us sound. But when we're talking about boards and commissions, they're in a little different space. I'm not looking for a great mechanical engineer or aerospace engineer. I'm not looking for somebody that can out Stacy, Stacy and I in parks. I'm, I'm looking for somebody who represents a part of the community that is to learn and give their input and their opinions on that. Now, the other piece of that is, as a council, we are looking for folks that align with what we want that to be. So when we talk about, you know, maybe that person has put something on social media, well, they've maybe stamped out a policy position that's completely opposite what this board wants or this council wants. And now I'm going to put that person on, on the board that oversees that? I, I, I've got a, I've got a challenge with that. Those people are my eyes and ears, and I've got to trust that their filter aligns with my filter. That's how I approach it. Now, maybe that's wrong. But I don't think it is. I mean, there are a couple I can think of right, right off the top of my head where there are certain policies I don't want to see enacted in this city. And I'm not going to put people on that board that might, might have that conversation bubble up to me because I'm going to sit there and I'm going to say no. So that's, that's where, that's where I think this gets a little different from I'm hiring the best person for the job. I, I'm, I'm appointing a person to help represent the council and also bring a set of opinions and, and I, eyesight for a part of the community that we don't have. So that, that's what makes this hard. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if there's a good answer for that, but I do think that, that if it were blind, that, that would undermine some of the things I'm trying to achieve as, as council.
I mean, we, we've got to be careful who we appoint. The name is part of it. The one thing that doesn't need to go out is the name. How are you going to truly find out that person's background? If I'm going to appoint them to a board, I'm going to want to look at how they act in the community and on social media. Are they only there to disrupt and tear down? And if the answer is that's what it shows, and that's the experience that everyone has had of that person, except for themselves, the answer's no. The answer's no, but I, I won't know that if I don't know who's applying.
But I guess it depends on how far you take the process, right? So if we're going through, we're looking at the application and that's all we're looking for, then I, I agree. So I absolutely concur. I, I thought everybody made phone calls to people after he's going through the first criteria, then you go through, make a, make a quick phone call, talks about why you want to go on the board. And some of the things that you blind out in the application will probably come through in that second conversation. But if, if we're taking those applications and just putting them in yes, no, without any further investigation, say, okay, well, maybe, maybe that's part of the issue. I, I like to at least have a secondary phone call with folks to, to find out, okay, you know, we talked about things and I saw this post, tell me what you meant by that. You know, and the crazy will come out in that call. If it came out on Facebook and it's really there, the crazy will come out on the phone call as well.
So I think, I think what I'm hearing is, let's, let's tread lightly on this, that we understand that we need, we need some seasoning for the gumbo. That, that we, we need, we have parts of our city that we need, we need to work on, but I think that that's going to be captured in, in other pieces. I don't know if I'm hearing consensus around mimicking, mirroring the, the city hiring process.
Okay.
Does that, does that help?
Yep, yep. I think we've got that one. Okay, so let's go on to the next one, which is providing wifi. This says at all public parks, but with highest priority given to low and moderate income areas.
So this one was, remember when we used to do the council pitches? This, my second year on council, this was going to be my, my pitch for the second year before I found out we weren't doing them. But I, this all came out of what happened when COVID happened. And we really saw that there was a, a good portion of our city that just didn't have access to the internet. And that just breaks my heart because I feel like that's, I mean, how do you get ahead if you're, you know, if somebody had, this group of people has wifi and this group doesn't. This is incredibly important. And I, I, I don't know what the cost associated with all of that. And I, that's my biggest question, and I know that we can't go from zero to a hundred.
Yeah, we, we have, we've marked this one partially complete because we've done five and we used ARPA funding for it. I think it was around three hundred thousand dollars. So obviously, we cannot do all parks next fiscal year and get it done. But we can continue to do a small number and we do, are currently in the process of both our IT staff and our park staff of looking for grants. Hopefully not federally funded grants, but grants that would also help us install wifi in parks. So that was something I think we all agree is important and we'll try and do as many as we can. And you may see a budget request for that.
And I'd love to see some, some metrics on utilization from the ones that we have.
Yeah, good point.
We'll get an idea of, of bandwidth and.
Well, and I, and I, with the metrics, I think it's also important to know what do people know that the parks have wifi? Are we putting signs at the park that says this? Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
So I mean, I just, I'd be interested to at least have that as part of the conversation.
Do you know if we have any signs?
We don't have signs.
Okay.
You can't just feel the wifi when you walk in the space?
Yeah, I mean, so I, I mean, I think that would make a big difference if, if people don't really know that there's free public wifi there.
The kids will find it.
Yeah.
I'm going to lean into this a little bit as well, because this, this actually, I think it's become less controversial since COVID. But if you had asked me about this item five years ago, right before COVID hit, I'm still equating internet maybe with cat videos and, you know, fun little TikToks and stuff like that. But in my opinion, this is, this is utility now. Just like I wouldn't go through and say, who deserves electricity and who doesn't? I wouldn't go through and say, who deserves plumbing and who doesn't? This is a way of life now. So I, I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for the public support of that utility.
Huge proponent of this. I think this is critically important if we're going to keep everybody involved. I mean, at least we say, we've got, hey, you've got wifi here. If you go to, a lot of these conferences, this is, they, they talk about this, I mean, a lot. I mean, everyone, I seem like they were talking about this.
I would, this got me thinking. I, if, because I, I agree, I think with Patrick there, I think this is a utility. I would love to see if there's a way to capture the folks that are using it like we do with a library card. If you're going to use a city utility, okay, it's, it's free, absolutely, but you, you have to maybe apply for, for a wifi card with the city. Maybe that's just through the portal to give some information. But I, I, I think that would help us as well to get better engagement with our, with our residents.
If you're, so I just wanted to clarify. So if I'm going out to a park, I'm a kid, I go out to a park, I know there's wifi, you want me to have something, I have to do something to be able to access the wifi?
Some way that we could, we could maybe connect with you, whether that's, so like if I go to, if I go to the courthouse in Denton, there's a little page that says I have to agree with, and it usually asks me to put in like my email address.
That's how UT Southwestern does, and that's how they keep up with their metrics and stuff.
Okay.
I put, I put in my brother's email address for all that stuff, though, actually, so.
I put Patrick's in.
But, but maybe it pops up a, a quick survey, do you live in the neighborhood? Or do you, you know, that kind of thing? I don't know. But there's an opportunity there, I think.
That one we like, it's measurable. Do we have it or not? Yeah, nice and easy. The next one is evaluate additional activities that would bring people to Old Town. And that can be a number of things.
So for this one, I, I know that we have talked about, there's been some discussion about, oh, we're, we've done a lot in Old Town. We're done with Old Town. And I, I saw that the, the difference between where council had Old Town and where staff had Old Town, you know, it was, Old Town was like, what, what, number twelve? I, so I took this survey the day after we had our DCTA retreat. And really what was sticking with me is that, you know, Michael Moore is from the COG came and he talked to us. And he's essentially talking about, we as a region have to be looking at how do we, we all need to be investing in our public transportation systems that are really more of our mass transit systems, not just our highways, because we can't build it, you know. So what the COG is doing and what I think they're going to continue to do moving forward is they're going to be looking for ways to incentivizes, incentivize communities that are investing in transit oriented developments. And so, and we've got a whole lot going on right around our station. And we also have a whole lot of land out there that's really close to it as well. There's a lot of work to be done that I think the city is going to have to continue to be a part of, one. But two, if we do, we continue to prioritize it, I think the COG is going to be willing to be a participant, which is really important as well. So that's why I think that drove Old Town up on my list as being super important because it's not just, it's not just about Old Town. It's about how do we, how are we getting assistance from, you know, the COG to help in other areas of our city?
Yeah, leveraging that money.
Absolutely.
I think on this item, though, it's very specific about activation of Old Town, not necessarily the infrastructure. At least I'm reading it that way. So maybe evaluate additional activities. So like to me, when I read this, I think we're, you know, going to be taking the wellhouse and turning it into a visitor's information center, you know, could we put more games and stuff out in front of the city hall that people who work at the visitor's information can hand out like paddles for ping pong and things like that? Those are the types of things I'm, I'm thinking this is about.
Okay, so that was not necessarily clear. Whenever I think about bringing people to Old Town, I'm thinking about people who are living here. Yes, people who are here to, for entertainment purposes, but really for the people that are residing here and who are also shopping here. So maybe that was just a little bit of a disconnect. Maybe that's the difference between kind of where I was thinking this item was and where staff was thinking. I do think that some of those things are important of how we, we activate, but I mean, having people live here is how we activate those spaces.
I, 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 I would like to, I mean, last night when we left Prairie House, it was eight o'clock. Old Town had gone to sleep. That does not help us. It is a literally a ninety-year-old woman that when the sun goes down, It is a literally a ninety year old woman that when the sun goes down, it's gone to sleep. The activities and stuff to bring life and energy and vibrance into that, we need those type of shops. Okay, um, we don't have. Our Old Town block isn't nearly as long as, say, Grapevine. Grapevine did it right. There's people moving at any given time, um, at night, in the morning. There, it's very eclectic, but almost every single shop draws people in the doors. We need to find that secret sauce.
So I I I appreciate that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do. Put forth that maybe last night, when it was eighteen degrees, wasn't the best data point for that, because I tell you, when we came back, wait, wait, hold on, let me finish. We came back from the um, William, how good's the name, Bruce Wilk. Robinson, Robinson, um, thing that we did over in MCL a couple of weeks ago. I left there about nine thirty and I was struck by how vibrant actually Old Town was. There was things happening in the halls. There were people out walking and I was, it made me very happy, actually. I went through and I see that more often than not, so I, I don't that I agree that it's it's. It's quite, it can always be improved, but I don't know that yesterday I'd use that as a as a data point, cuz I had the exact opposite experience just a couple of weeks earlier when it was nice out.
I live here and I walk it a lot and yeah, there are some people that walk around, but that doesn't mean that there's a lot of activity. If you'll look at the times that most of Main Street businesses close is when it's dark.
Yeah.
Nobody's open. Well, how do you, how do you keep Old Town going if you don't have anything open?
That's a really interesting take on it, because when I read this, I was thinking, so so what, more more music festivals downtown, more Fourth of July downtown? And this is, like, we do, I think, a pretty good job with that already and I started thinking about dollars being limited resources. And, you know, if I substitute in, how do we get more people to activate in Central Park? You know, this is, this is a trade off that we're making. So my thought on this was, was we have a lot of activities in Old Town. I love Old Town. I come down here. Probably more than the village shops in Castle Hills, I'm down here all the time. Um, I would like to see us find ways to bring more people from outside of Old Town into Old Town, especially out in the Castle Hills area. How do we get them out and explore their city and live in their city like they should, like we should be? But I'm, I was trying to think about what other activities would that be? And should we start trying to activate other spaces in the city? So that's what I've been planning.
So I'm gonna jump in real quick. I think everybody's right, uh, but I think with, well, it's going back to the uh sheet that we have here. I'm looking back at Old Town and I'm like, I completely forgot about trying to have a maker space and all that stuff. Maybe this needs to evolve and be tweaked on what we need to do on a goal in Old Town. Because I I understand why staff is like, well, we don't need a maker space in here. We we, this is, this stuff is at least three or four years old, I think, when we were talking about that. So maybe the evolution needs to be of, you know, creating more businesses at night, uh, because I do agree, but. I do, I've been here long enough to remember when there was only a subway in Old Town and and you could roll up the the streets at three o'clock. We're getting, we're making improvements and, you know, maybe this needs to be tweaked to, you know, activating businesses, maybe extending Old Town, uh, you know. Find, trying to find developers or things of that nature. Then that will become a higher priority for staff, that'd be more of an economic development idea. Uh, it is better than it was, uh, but, you know, like, like, it can be ongoing and something else. I think that this one, we need to tweak. Uh, a little bit to to kinda date it up to twenty twenty-five and not twenty fourteen.
I'll jump into, uh. I agree, we need to, it needs to be tweaked, but I think a big, a big thing is also making, there are people that still don't know. In Louisville that we have Old Town. I mean, I run into people all the time who have no idea what's going on down here. And I try to let them know, but we have to find some way of, I know we've worked on getting the word out. Uh, but that's, I'll keep beating that bush. We need to somehow. And I don't know, I don't know the answer, but uh, we need to let people know that there are things going on here. I talked to people who've lived on the west side of I thirty-five for twenty years. And had never been across the bridge, cuz they didn't know anything was going on down here. Uh, doesn't make any sense to me, but, but that's, I guess, the communications, how we get the word out is a big thing.
I'm I'm gonna agree, I'm gonna agree with Ronnie on this. I think this is, I took this completely different than what Kristen did, but. Yeah, I think this, to me, is about activating Old Town. It's like, but one of my biggest things, I think, when I was trying to get on city council is this, this like this. We roll up the sidewalks downtown and it's it's dead and we, I think, we're, I think we're almost there. I think we got Old Town crap coming. I think we got a few things, but, you know, it's, it's like, you know, it's like the Grapevine experience. It's like, I think that's what. We're, we're, we're looking towards something like that, so somebody want, you know, there's things, multiple things that people wanna be downtown on. It's not gonna be every night, but yeah, maybe not eighteen degrees, but, you know, you want, there's that one thing, you know, maybe it's the London Baker, maybe it's, you know, it's. Places like that, but that's, I think, what, a jazz club, you know, those kind of things.
I think where my head sits on this one is, absolutely, let's keep figuring out how we can make this and continue to grow this. Um, a lot of my reading over the last, you know, six to eight months on redevelopment and cities and downtowns has been. That cities are much more involved or need to be much more involved in the curation of the space. Um, so going to McKinney and Grapevine and seeing, you know, what are the things that are out there that would work here? Um, and being more actively engaged. I know historically, we've kinda let the market do that. Um, but I think the market is looking for those opportunities uh to work with us instead. There, there's so much noise out there now that, you know, we've got people that just don't, don't even realize they can come across the bridge. Well, that's the same for business owners as well. They may not even realize that there's an opportunity. Um, so how do we curate that? And I don't think that's just an Old Town thing, by the way. I think that's a Northern Gateway thing. I think that's gonna be a mall thing. Um, and we just happen to have developers that are trying to to build that out, um, in those areas, whereas I think Old Town's a little more organic.
I I will say real quick, anybody who might be listening, there's nothing more cozy than going to perk at eight thirty or, yeah, I think it was at nine. I like to go out there in the evenings and just sit and have some iced tea or something. It's a cozy little space. It's kind of fun. Um, so I recommend get out in there and live in, live in Old Town.
Let's uh, let's move on. Are we, are we good? We're good with one through five? Um, we good, any of the ones on six through ten, do we wanna deep dive on these or do we wanna just keep moving along?
So I I would like to tweak something or at least put this out there, um, which one is it? So item eight, I think it's too narrow. When I look at item three. And when I look at item seven, we just talked about cohorts. For, I don't, it doesn't matter to me if the cohorts that need, that need a hug are are seniors. Um, are they, are they, um, are they female? Are they religious groups? If we find people out there who who don't, who can't connect, um, I do think we should be reaching out to everybody. I'd like to broaden that out, frankly.
Counsel? I don't have an issue with that one. Anybody else? All right, so that kinda moves us through. I think data driven, of course, geographies and whatnot, it kinda ties into all the other conversations we've been having. Um, you know, the connected city, uh, again, that that talks with TSTC and some of our other tools that we have out there, maybe LISD. Talk about green centerpiece, yeah, again, uh, funding this year is gonna be a challenge, but it always is. Um, with the instability that we're having at the federal level.
And that one is a planned four B bond, um, upcoming bond, so that's something that you'll see come back to you fairly soon. If you'll have the the uh opportunity to weigh in on that a couple of times coming up in the.
And on on number ten, you know, whether we do that in-house, whether we figure out somebody that we can partner with and. You know, do some sort of collaboration, I, I think that's critical to be able to have contact points. I mean, I know, I know how much better we do with companies when we have conversations with them. Um, I I go back to Ericsson and the and the great conversations we've had with them. And being able to help them get their lead certification, being able to talk, plug them into DCTA. Um, that, I think that just makes things better. Um, I think we focus on the, you know, the Mary Kays of the world, but I mean, we've got, we've got tons of great businesses that people don't even. Uh, yeah, they, they probably aren't terribly connected to the city, but they're an amazing business. I mean, I, we've talked about Woo We Did. You know, being one of the top Chinese restaurants in the whole metroplex. Uh, we've got uh Starship Bagel. I mean, we're, I'm gonna focus on food right now because apparently I'm hungry. Um, but uh, there, there are lots of great, we talked earlier, Claire mentioned, we have a a bunch of folks that have businesses that have an education component. Um, I think those are, those are key, but there's a way for us to create that. I I've been a huge component of this and I just don't know why, well, I have some, I have some personal ideas, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go through that. But I think having that better connection with our business community is is critical, um, and and how we do that. I think we we definitely need to put a bigger, bigger focus on it. Cuz we've got a huge one, right? I mean, there's, there's a reason our tax rate is as low as it is and and it's because we have a great business base.
Yeah.
Um, counsel, any others in there that you think need to move, need to change? Wanna give some input on? Any concerns about eleven, twelve, and can we get thirteen on there? So these are kind of the three that maybe there was some disconnect, but, well, I wouldn't say disconnect, they just didn't pop up as high on one list or the other. Are there any of these, like, eleven through thirteen that you think is a, is a, you wanna make an argu- argument that they're not an edge case, that they actually need to be in the top? I feel like we're doing a pretty good job with number thirteen already. But I'm not sure what staff's differentiator, differentiator is on that.
You know, just overall staff ranked everything lower than counsel did. So just because it's lower on here, it still may have been about the same priority for us.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll look at these and and try and bring you back these throughout the year, kind of progress on where we are. There'll be your short term kind of. More um, reporting on and you may see budget items related to those in the coming year.
Does this give what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, I appreciate the deep dive on this and I think because we spent a little bit of extra time on this, um, what we're going to do, um.
We, we still have.
I'm so sorry, we're done with this slide.
Oh, we're done with this slide. I'm sorry about that. That's my fault for not checking the slide count. How many more slides?
We only, we only have a couple more, but it may take a minute, so we just need to.
That's fair.
So you have, you have actual items that fell, those were the ones that were the top priority. You still have another twenty-four, I think, items that are on that list, our original twenty twenty-five list. Our plan is to, as we're developing the Louisville thirty, twenty thirty-five plan. We'll bring those into that plan and start the discussion with those. Some of these that we talked to today will obviously be in that plan as well, cuz they're ongoing now more than just a checkbox. But there were these scores that were fairly low on both of ours and on the average, you can see that they were around five points or lower. We didn't know if you wanted us to bring these into the twenty thirty-five plan as well, or if you would rather we say we're good. We don't need to pursue those right now.
I mean, what is it gonna hurt to bring it in?
Well, if it's.
Bog down the.
Yeah, if it's, it's just resources that, I mean, right now we've identified as not great.
Right.
So do we wanna continue to not grate them? Um, I'll get, I'll give you one on thirty-eight and and, I mean, I loved the idea of it. Um, you know, how do we create signage and maybe we find a a place to put a a Korea town or a Venezuela town or. Put in, I just, I don't see that happening. I mean, look at how long it took for us to just even talk about that kind of thing for Old Town. And I mean, it's, it's been ten years. Uh, and we're gonna, we're gonna have it, but it's, it's been a decade, so is it, is it reasonable to think that we're gonna be able to create these little pocket neighborhoods? Like, okay, here's, here's the valley and we're gonna create the valley identity, um, and put in some, some placemakers and all of that stuff. Is that gonna take ten years? I just, I I, I, it's a, it's a, I think it's beautiful on paper and sketches out. I just don't think implementation wise, where are we gonna find the little property pieces to do it? Where are we gonna find the community that says, hey, yeah, we're, we're gonna agree on this? Um, I just, I don't see that one as being, uh, gonna get a lot of traction.
Take on that and that is, but I I would, I just would make it a priority. I'm not against it. Actually, I think if it organically pops up and something just looks like it, it'd be great. Uh, I'd love to explore it a little bit, but I don't see a need to make that a priority focus for for us over the next ten years.
And Pep lets you do that. I mean, you can get uh, street toppers and all that for your neighborhood if you wanna, you know, it's five hundred dollars and matching grants and then the city. So there, there's ways to do it.
I I definitely think you're right with regard to the average single family neighborhood. It's hard, it's hard to get, I mean, if I were to tell my neighbors, we're now called the valley. People will be like, I don't know what you're talking about and why is that name here? I mean, we understand why it's called the valley, but. Um, but then there's other areas, like you said, that are more organic or maybe not organic, like the Lake District, like we're actively working on branding for that. So that might work in that regard. Um, you know, the small area plan, we came up with Old Town North. Um, and that community said they wanted to be called Old Town North. Um, so I think we've gotten input where there's, through process, we've kind of collaborated on that. I think that might be possible. I just think that the average single family neighborhood is, it's gonna be hard to put that together, so I I agree with you on the. Um, if it, if it comes up organically or through another project, it might make more sense, but.
And and just, just so, like, I was part of the, I guess technically I do live in Old Town North. Um, and we did, the residents that were, you know, in attendance, um, at, at some of those meetings, we did all agree, yeah, Old Town North sounds good. But I can almost guarantee you, none of us have ever said, oh, well, what, what neighborhood do you live in? Old Town North? I don't, so I, I mean, I just don't think that it's used.
Yeah.
I'll just say really quickly, I'm like, if we're gonna be a data driven driven city and these are fall off the list, we have enough to do, so why don't we just?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't see any of these. I think thirty-seven would be one that maybe you hand off to Independence Gardens or some other organization and let them run, run that.
Okay.
Okay. So we only have one uh remaining slide and this one just kinda goes over what Cl- uh Claire actually talked about a little bit earlier. That these would become your short term, uh Louisville twenty twenty-five top action priorities. You'll see more about in the coming year. Then the medium term, we're still focusing, these are the ones that you actually adopted last year. And we wanted to go over those again to make sure these are still where your head is focused. We talked about a lot of these at the retreat already. And in particular, you know, we've talked about affordable, all, all of these will have some cost to, well, not all of them, I guess. But city infrastructure, where we talk about the water rate, you know the needs there, that that's definitely gonna be a focus, affordable housing. We may or may not have costs associated with the Lake District in the upcoming budget, but it's definitely a focus and a time. Uh, a lot of time staff will be spending. Beautification initiatives, you really haven't seen a lot of discussion on that in um our retreat this year. What are your thoughts on keeping that as a high strategic focus area for the coming year?
I, I think it's, I think it's important because I think ultimately what it boils down to is. Um, how people feel about the place that they live and if um, if it's rundown. Um, you know, they're, I I, I think it, it, it just waterfalls into so many things. Um, that, you know, if we can, if we can continue those efforts and show that we care. Um, I, I think once we make that step, then, then it's contagious. It will be picked up by, by people who. Um, maybe live there and like, oh, well, if, if they're keeping this place up, then it encourages other people to do the same. And then they feel good about the place that they live and then, then they wanna engage. Um, and I, so I just think there's waterfall benefits that come from that, that are really important.
It's part, it's like, when I was talking about Grapevine secret sauce, that's a very high priority for them. And it draws a lot of people from all over the place to it. Just to see, when I drove through there this past week, all the pictures of the powwow, that I absolutely love, by the way. Um, and all the public art and the gazebo and all the places where you can do selfies and pictures of your fam- it, they were full. And had they not made that a priority, it's just another drive by.
I do have a quick question. I think I had to step out for the last part of the mall redevelopment conversation. So we, we've been talking about this for two years, we've been working, I get this a strategy, it's not like building a doghouse, it's an entire area. Realistically speaking, when will we see the first bulldozer out there? Is this twenty twenty-eight, twenty thirty-one, this year?
Definitely not this year. I mean, uh, so I think the, um, I think I went through the phases. Um, so phase one was the visioning, so we finished the visioning where we came up with our own plan and then tried to uh, support to get the number of. Um, mall owners to be reduced and to find a mall owner that actually was wanting to do something. Um, the last year has been spent on the, the develop, the owner redevelop, designing everything that's something viable and then presenting it to council. So that um, next step is going to be getting all the other mall owners on board, submitting a zoning. So that, um, next step is going to be getting all the other mall owners on board, submitting a zoning plan, and they have to get financing. So I'm, I'm thinking four to five years.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, I want, I want, I want you to-
Thank you for your honesty, appreciate it.
I want you to be, yeah, it's a big project.
Okay, set my expectations, thank you.
Yeah.
So then we talked about ten-minute walk to a park and kind of the funding that we have set aside for that and some of Stacy's plans there.
Wait Gina, Gina, hold on. So going back to the mall redevelopment, so really at this point, that's really mostly in the developer and property owner's hands, right? So, um, I mean, is that something that we, this is where I'm not sure. Does it need to remain on this list?
You know, I think this list is not just, it, and it's up to you, but I will tell you for this to succeed, we have to keep our-
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to keep focused on it. Um, and this is, this, you can look at this with regard to it's, it's feeding into budget. There probably won't be a budget request coming this next year associated with it, cause all the costs would be in the developers', um, um, hands right now. But you are gonna be spending a significant amount of staff time going through the rezoning and all those, those types of things. So, um, it is a, when you say strategic focus area, it is a focus that staff would need to be focused on.
And if I push this out into a long-term, you know, eight, ten years, then I'm gonna start, uh, getting to the, to the end of when I could spend those bond funds responsibly. So that to me means that we, we've gotta help push in the intermediate term, um, to make sure that all aligns, cause we've got that carrot to sit out there. And I just, I would hate to have us waste it.
Well, I mean, I guess from, so with that being the case, I mean, it's, it's almost kind of similar to Old Town as well, which is not on the list. So I guess that's where I'm having a hard time, where it's, um, it's still important, it's, there are still things happening with it, but, um. Is it, is it something that staff is driving and putting, I, I guess, like, will there be budget requests for it?
I don't think there's gonna be a budget request this year, no.
I mean, is that necessarily what this list is supposed to be?
The short-term I think is, but the medium term may or may not be.
Yeah, so this is, um, what we're trying to get, I, I guess, what we're trying to transition into is having this. Cause when you look at that strategic focus area, that is your middle range, like, where do you want focus over the next, not necessarily budget year? And that's where we're trying to make the distinction with the stuff on the left, which is going to be in future years saying, where do you want us to? You know, we're gonna have to put a budget requested on this. Now, I will say that medium term is maybe two to three years of, of timeframe, um, of strategic focus area. I think it informs us, uh, onto staff's, uh, I, I don't have a great, I, I guess my problem is I don't have a great answer for you of saying, this has to be associated. It's really up to you guys, what you want to do on strategic focus areas. Does it have to be related to budget or can it be related to staff time? You're right, Old Town moved to mission critical. You could move mall redevelopment to mission.
I think the mall is probably, I think more, all of that stuff in the medium term is where it needs to be, where we keep an eye on it and we update as necessary. Because to Christian's point, it, it reminds me exactly of Old Town when, uh, we couldn't get developers to develop some property that we had. We couldn't get somebody to clean up some of the things that we had here or see it as a viable place to build. I remember a point when we didn't have a parking garage, when we're talking about, yeah, we'll probably get a parking garage in ten years. And then when, now we have two or three, actually. So it's gonna be a slow trough and then it's gonna be a race. And it's gonna turn, and once that, once that faucet turns, turns on, and we don't necessarily have control of it, but we better be ready and kind of engaged with the, with the mall folks. Because we went from how many owners, seven or something like that?
It was like five, I think.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's a slow trough until it's not. And a lot of these things, you know, we can kind of push to the back burner, but the, the mall is one thing we want to get going. It looks like, like, I, I like the plan that we saw, you know, we've come a long way from where we were. I would love to see one of those retail places kind of go away, but I'll, that's just my opinion. But that, that has to work as natural course and we just have to keep an eye on it. We, we don't control it, but we, we can definitely try to help guide it and have some, some say in that to help get moving forward. So I, I, I like where we are in the medium term. You know, Old Town is always gonna be on the list of things to do, but it, it somewhat is driving itself. We just need to kind of help mold some things we, we want. Just my take.
Yep.
We have one now.
One of the other things we would talk about is Business one-twenty-one says corridor planning. We've adopted the plan now.
Right.
So do we want to change that to implementation?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Uh, what's the word, a catalyst project happen? And again, that's another one that's not completely in our control, but, you know, I think that there's things that we can do to push.
And I, and I think we're good with the short-term with the caveats that were identified during the, the discussion.
What'd you say?
I think the, the twenty-twenty-five short-term, twenty-twenty-six short-term are fine with the caveats that we identified during the discussion. Cause I mean, this, we just took the language forward.
Sure.
Only other one I wanted to talk about was the fact that we've talked a couple of times at retreat here about the, uh, retiree insurance. And we've talked about volunteer management. And when we look at the budget related to those, those don't really fall into any of your current strategic focus areas. Yeah, it could be, you're right.
Yeah.
The volunteers could be-
Volunteers definitely engagement.
Yeah, that's public engagement.
The, we've had a strategic focus area before about, what was it called?
Employee recruitment, development and retention that failed a mission last year. But with this very, this large push, uh, financial push to, uh, address the retiree health insurance. Is that something you want to push to medium term at this point? As a strategic focus area?
What, what difference would it make to just keep it mission versus pushing it to medium or doing the same thing regardless, right?
Yes, you've given us direction. I think it's just whether or not you want it to align with your, uh, strategic focus areas.
I think it's a necessity regardless of that. It's just a foundational necessity.
It helps us in our budget process because we tie everything back to either a strategic focus area or a priority. And if we don't have one, that means that it's a priority of yours, then it makes it difficult in our process to tie to it.
Now I got you.
Are, are people not our infrastructure?
No, we don't consider that.
We need to.
I think you have so many infrastructure needs that would just maybe add-
That would be your whole budget. People and infrastructure would just be one category.
Is a priority.
I mean, if you want to create some words to slam it into something, which is what I feel like we're trying to do. But if, if, I mean, it's important that we pay our people and we support our people. I think that happens all the time. You know, if, if we came back and said, hey, we, we need to do something for, uh, this group of employees. Because it doesn't, it doesn't let us be competitive otherwise, I, I don't. I mean, is anybody gonna sit here and go, wow, that's, that's, that's not in our medium-term list, we can't do it. We'll just continue to be uncompetitive. I don't know if that makes sense.
Find a spot, stick it in there.
Well, I'm aligned actually, Mayor, cause this is one of those things that, there's foundational things that you just do to be an organization, whether that's business or city, where you just do some things. For example, you could say training's important, right? Well, if you went from having no training to where you made it a priority, everybody got trained, that doesn't mean when you stop making that important, you stop doing training. It just means that's now ingrained in the foundation of what's now our, our city. So that, that's where I kind of get, get mixed in this, like, I'm not saying it's not important, I'm just saying I expect that to be part of the foundation of what we do. And I realize that there's, if there's individual specific budget impacts that we have to do, then I'd rather talk about those than, than couch it all under, is it important to retain great people?
One of the things that we require of our departments when they submit an action step is they have to select a big move or a strategic move. Despite the specific items we identified here, they can still select, oh, this is, we're gonna value people or a values-driven organization. So they do still have that option as well. It's just additional information that we provide to you in budget. We don't necessarily, you know, call that out specifically, but that is how we organize our presentation during workshop.
So I would, I appreciate that, cause you tie everything back to, to something. I, I typically call those more pillars. These are the pillars that make up the community, or the, the organization. Now, those pillars may not line up with an action priority, cause it's a pillar, it's just something I do. So I'm gonna tie a specific training to one of two area, areas, priorities or pillars. Um, this is the way I think about that. But I appreciate that, tie it back to something that we've all agreed to, um, so we can basically see how it fits into the bigger plan.
So, so to help staff, like, you, you're trying to make this, which strategic move are you trying to put this under?
I think we found a solution.
Okay, yeah, so I mean-
We can tie it to big moves or strategic moves, and one of our strategic moves is valuing people, a value-driven organization. So we can-
I, I think we, I think we set the priority on paying them, so whatever strategic move that you need to put it under, that, that's more of a management action and I don't think we need to be-
It is, we were just trying to make sure that it worked with our, with our budgeting process. We are very militant about you have to tie back to your str- your priorities or your plans, so, anyway, okay. We're good. I believe that is all that we have for you on this presentation. Thank you.
With that, we are, um, it's about ten fifteen. What we're gonna do is we're gonna take the, um, economic outlook, trends, demographics and budget insights, and we're gonna move that to a, a workshop later in the year. To buy back a little bit of time. I think the conversation we had was absolutely worthwhile, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate staff's flex- flexibility on our day. That will move us into, um, let's see here, we're, we're about thirty minutes behind schedule, but I think we need to take about a fifteen-minute bio break here. So we're gonna take fifteen minutes and then, um, we're gonna come back and, uh, Mr. Sims is gonna be driving the next chunk of our agenda. So we'll be back here at, uh, about ten-thirty. Back in our process here and next up is City Council DISC assessments. Mr. Sims?
Yes, good morning. So, I've been observing you all for the last twenty-four hours and you all are laboring and making some very, very difficult policy decisions. So now we're getting ready to shift into just having some fun and taking a look at ourselves and looking, taking a look at each other, your peers. And what are we gonna do? We're gonna try to spend a little bit of time understanding ourself, understanding others, sort of how to read each other and then how to adapt to each other. And talk a little bit about the DISC model. Play the video.
This is DISC. It gives you a quick intuitive way to understand yourself and the needs and priorities of the people around you. It describes four basic styles: D, I, S, and C. If you have a D or dominant style, you probably speak your mind, focus on the bottom line, and take pride in winning. You most likely prefer environments where decisions get made quickly and people are empowered to take charge of their work. But you may get impatient when you're asked to slow down or take a more diplomatic approach. If you have an I or influence style, you tend to focus on the positive, take quick action, and enjoy socializing. You're probably happiest in a work environment where you're free to explore exciting possibilities and share your ideas. But you might feel drained when you have to work alone for long periods or when people's attitudes seem too negative. Or you may have an S or steadiness style, which means you probably like to do your part, keep things calm and friendly and collaborate. You likely work best when you're part of a supportive team where expectations are clear. But if you're pressured to move too quickly or things get tense, it can stress you out and you might have trouble speaking up. And finally, if you have a C or conscientiousness style, you probably focus on getting things right, put time into analysis, and prefer to keep emotions in check. You tend to appreciate environments where you can work at your own pace and your expertise is valued. But you may get frustrated if you think decisions aren't being thought through or if you're expected to do a lot of socializing. So, how do you know your style? Well, everyone has a dot. That dot tells you your DISC style. Your dot can also be between two styles, such as in the area between I and S. And your dot's distance from the center of the circle is also important. Having a dot near the edge of your DISC map means you're strongly inclined toward your style. But if your dot is close to the center, you're only slightly inclined and characteristics from several different DISC styles may resonate with you. Your dot also determines your shading. Think of the colored shading on your map as your comfort zone. It helps you understand the kinds of activities or attitudes that may come naturally to you and those that take more energy. Keep in mind, no DISC style or dot location is better than any other. And because everyone is a blend of all four styles, there will probably be a few aspects of the other styles that you relate to. The bottom line is, everything DISC gives you a new way to understand yourself and the people around you, to see past limitations, to know when to stretch a little, and to build skills that, over time and with practice, help create a culture that works for everyone.
Okay, one of the first things that, to grab from that is that all of you have different styles, but there's no one style that's better than the other. That's just a foundational piece. And you may have pieces of all different styles in you. I'm gonna shift to, if you can see my screen here, there's a couple of dimensions as far as DISC. There's, the vertical axis at the top is active, outspoken. Down at the bottom, it's more reflective, thoughtful. The horizontal on the far right, accepting and warm. And then on the other side is skeptical and questioning. And what we're gonna do is drill down into some of the information that's on the website and find out a little bit more about ourselves. And I think in your packet is some instructions, like right now I'm going to workplace. And you, each one of you created an account and has a password, but just what drives you? And I know there's some Ds in you, in this room. So at the top is, as far as that, to the left, Ds respond, results. Around the circle, action, eyes into enthusiasm, collaboration, then S into support and stability, and then accuracy and challenge. This is gonna be interesting as we get into your individual styles. But this is what drives you, what drives you. I'm gonna shift to another page. Pull up, I'm gonna pull up my personal profile. And I took it with you. So page three.
Brandon Jones is the only one that added his photo to his profile here.
So look at the Ds. And it's interesting, 'cause I'm gonna flash up the entire group in a few minutes and you can get a chance to see it. Direct, as far as the D, direct, firm, strong-willed, forceful, results-oriented, eyes, influence, outgoing. I know there's some eyes in this room and I've been observing that eye behavior over the last couple of days. Enthusiastic, optimistic, high-spirited, lively. We've seen, I've seen, I've noticed the S's in the room. Steadiness, even-tempered, accommodating, patient, humble, tactful, and then the C, analytical, reserved, precise, private, systematic. And by the way, I think you have every one of these places that I'm sure you have your instructions how to pull up this information on your own. And one of the things, I've taken DISC multiple times, but there's new information quote in Catalyst that they didn't have before. So it's a wealth of information, especially when we shift to the over, hold on, let me see here. Shifting over here, your DISC style, colleagues, we're gonna pull up that, your groups, get advice, workplace, DISCology. I'm gonna flip back and forth. I think we've covered this. I'm gonna come back to this. This you've seen, I just covered that. I find that even in myself, if I have a strength, sometimes it can also be my weakness. And this you don't have here, this was done by experts. They compiled some of the opposites as far as, it says on a bad day, or I like to think of it when you're under stress or when you're in conflict. So a D conceivably, this does, it's not an automatic, but it's conceivable that on a bad day or you're super stressful or you're under a lot of conflict, you can get aggressive, controlling, driving, overbearing, intolerant. This would be like the opposite of your strengths. For those with eyes outgoing, can be a little frantic, indiscreet, flamboyant, hasty. And the steadiness, docile, bland, plotting-resistant and stubborn. And then the bad days for a conscientious, stuffy, indecisive, suspicious, cold, and reserved. I'm going to have you all do an exercise. And if you would, so, we're gonna count to two, starting with you, Brandon. No, one.
I'm sorry.
You're one.
One.
Two.
Okay.
One.
So if I could have the ones in the back and the twos on the other side, I've got an exercise that I'm gonna hand out to.
No, they don't need a microphone.
Yeah, no, it's not private work, it's, it's all public work here in the room, so. But yeah.
Your assignment. Read that and tell me, and I'm gonna give you 10 minutes to look it over. And then, I'll give you 10 minutes on the timer. And then what I'm gonna do is ask you, scenario number one. Is it a D, I, S, or C? And there's some clues in there. So take your time, read each one, and figure out if it's a D, I, S, or C. 10 minutes. Who's got my timer?
I can do it.
Okay.
She told me that I concluded, she concluded me with a C. She said that I'm a nice wife.
The most important thing is to determine the style. There's some other things in there, but we'll cover later how to communicate with that style. But the most important thing, see if you can figure out from this information what style it is. That's the most important piece, figure out the style. Figure out the style. There's some clues, and there are some little curves. And you all can work together as a group to offer input on scenario number one, or scenario number two, scenario three, or scenario four. Work as a group.
Are we supposed to do hybrids on here?
Pardon me?
Are we supposed to do hybrids on here, or just effects?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
Is it just one, or do we do a hybrid, like an ID or SC?
No, no, it's just one style.
Okay.
One style. No, but there's some interesting little clues in there. Oh, flag, let's go back. Good day. Good day. Is it a D? Is scenario one a D, I, S, or a C? Is scenario two a D, I, S, or C?
Do you want our needs to write in?
No.
Will you ask one?
No, I'm just, I'm just wanna make sure we're clear. We've got a few minutes left, I think. Four minutes left. Look at these high achievers. Okay, if everybody's done, you can come back to your seats. This is a high achieving group. They're done before the timer went off. Okay, I'm gonna read the scenario. You have been made the team leader of a team responsible for a large software implementation. The team is cross-functional and is sponsored by a senior executive. The team has been unable to generate much in the way of results. Many of the team members are receiving mixed messages from their managers about the priority of the team as opposed to their normal job functions. You feel the need to try and generate support from the team sponsor and talk to the previous team leader about it. In your meeting with the previous team leader, you find out that he tried to tell the sponsor that people were frustrated, and that the sponsor's reply was, "I don't care if they're frustrated or not, just get the system in place." Since you have been exposed to DISC, you sit down and try to formulate a way to communicate with the sponsors so your message can be heard. Here is what you know about the sponsor. Whenever you schedule a meeting, the sponsor is always five minutes late and starts shooting questions as soon as you walk in the room. Nice clue. The sponsor is well-respected and very demanding. The sponsor plays in a company golf league, good sense of humor. What's the sponsor's behavioral preference?
You want ones and then twos, answer?
I'm just, I'm asking you all.
One has D. Brandon, are you our team, are you our team captain?
Sure, D.
Huh?
D.
Final answer, D.
Final answer. I'm impressed. You're absolutely right. And why did you come to that conclusion?
Well, I mean, the comment about that they, they're more concerned with the outcome than the people getting stuff done, so that person is direct and strong-willed and forceful and result-oriented.
You're absolutely right. Results-oriented. It's like, I don't care, get to the bottom line. Ds want results. And start shooting questions, it's on that side, we talked about, they're more questioning and skeptical. You're 100% right, that was a D. Okay, next one. Huh?
Can I guess who the D is on our group?
I'm gonna show you the group in just a minute.
Okay.
Scenario number two. In your role as team leader of a large software implementation team, you meet with each team member individually to see what resources or assistance they need. One team member in particular expresses her clear frustration with the way things have been done so far. The site issues such, the site, she cites issues such as unreasonable deadlines, constant change, lack of consistent processes and procedures as a source of her frustration. She also complains that the meetings never start on time and that the team exhibits a lack of organization. Goes on to state that she hates to say anything because she considers the former team leader a friend and would hate to be disloyal. Since you have been exposed to DISC, you sit down and try to figure out what team member needs to be successful. Here's what you need to know. Five minutes early, always has a copy of the agenda, same house, car, job last year's, plays in the company golf league, great sense of humor, volunteers for Habitat. What do we have?
Another golfer.
What style is this one?
We came up with S.
We came up with S, yep.
We did too.
Wow, I'm impressed. That's an S. That's an S. And what made you come to that conclusion?
Because it was the correct one.
That was the correct one, but what made, what made you come to that conclusion?
Well, they don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings by telling them that they're not necessarily happy with it. So they're very accommodating, but they're also very structured.
Okay, you're right, S, you were dead on target. Scenario number three. What is this style?
We had an I. It's the Ronnie style.
The Ronnie style. And what made you come to that conclusion?
Because she's just like me.
Well, there are some differences.
Very outgoing. You can tell by me, all four of those categories are very outgoing activities.
You're 100% on target. I'm impressed. Scenario number four.
By default, C.
And why did you come to that conclusion?
Because it's the right one.
Analytical, reserved, seems to take time to make good decisions.
Yeah, process.
Gathers information, processes, yeah.
Process, process, process.
Gets right down to business.
Gets right down to business. So, a question for you. You see a car ad. And tell me what an S would see in the car ad? You know, the advertisement for a vehicle. Tell me what an S would see in a, in a car ad?
Reliability.
The what?
The reliability.
An S?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what else?
I don't know, because I have to go through the ads. I like, I have to fast forward the ads.
So an S?
So which one is that? D.
And, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, did I say S? I meant D. I'm sorry, you're right. Tell me what a D would think of the car ad?
I think the D's gonna get right down to the price, they're gonna look at the price first, maybe the model. Does it, yeah, does it, does it suit the need that they have? Probably not quite as concerned about the color, maybe not quite as concerned about the gas mileage, but can I buy this today and just get on with my life?
Is it fast? How does it take curve? Action?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. What would an I think about the car ad? How would an I respond to the car ad?
Is it fun to drive? What color is it? How fast does it go?
Yeah. Would people like me in it?
Yeah.
I mean, how do people, how many people can I fit in it? What about the S? You said it right. Reliability, safety, security. Okay, what about the C?
Gas mileage, yeah.
Specs?
Yeah.
Details?
What does the Consumer Report say?
Okay. And in general, if you wanna learn how to read people, a D would be action, an I would be harmony, and S would be loyalty. C would be data. Another trick, another little cue. A D, what are we gonna do? What's the bottom line? An I, who? People. A S, how? And a C, why? Just little clues. So if you hear people using those what, who, why, how, you can get a little clue as to what their style is. I'm going to now pull you up as a group.
Hey, Alan, can I, can I actually quiz them on their skills right now? And you see the four of us, you know the four of us pretty well. We all know what our primary is. Can you guess what each one of us are?
Look at the smiles.
Do we have to guess the combination?
If you can, you get extra points if you get the combination correct.
Well, Gina's gonna be a C, for sure.
Gina's yellow.
Gina?
Gina, yeah, she's in the C.
Very analytical.
Say Claire's ID.
Yes, she is.
Yep. Chantae?
D.
You're correct. You're correct.
Are you a DI or just a D?
No, she's a DC.
No, she's a D.
Just a D. Just all green.
And then Jim?
Jim's, Jim's I.
Yeah, I had maybe a DI, but yeah.
He's Italian, he's gotta be I.
Yeah.
ID?
DI.
DI, okay.
All right, good job. Y'all knew. Y'all understand it.
Wow, I mean, they picked this up pretty quick.
I do think that, I think each of y'all do a great job playing a role. You can get to an S if you gotta get to an S. I think, I suspect strongly that when you have lunch with each of us, maybe your approach is a little bit different. But I think you can fall in any of these, but your primary characteristic's gonna be, I think, what we named.
The interesting thing is, we did hire a facilitator that came in, and he was actually a psychiatrist who came in and talked through to directors, not to provide psychology, but he did a DISC assessment. And he said that our team was, interestingly, not like other, our executive team was not like, not this, just all the directors, not like other teams in government, where a lot of them are S's or Cs, that we have a high number of Ds on our team, which is not usual for government. So, I thought that was interesting.
I think that that is why, or I feel that that is why, we get so much done.
I agree. Anyway, Alan, go ahead, sorry.
I'm gonna pull you up as a group. So here it is. Individually. Ronnie Kaye, ID. Ronnie, did that, you read that? Does that describe you?
Yes, I'm very self-aware.
I would've put her as more of a DI, but...
What killed me is when I was reading TJ's of mine, and then there said, "There is no difference." I thought, "Oh, we're in trouble."
TJ Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
What did you think of your assessment?
It's, it's, it's okay. I mean, Claire knows that I have some strong C capabilities. Whether, that's a secondary skill set, though. I know that this is designed to look at your primaries, so. But it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, you can cultivate any and all of these.
Kristen, what did you think of yours?
I thought it was spot-on.
Yeah, it definitely, you're the role model for this.
She's a DC.
Brandon?
I don't think it got you, like, pigeonholed enough. I think there was more.
Yeah, it's, it's missing some things, but. But it is, uh, I mean, yeah, I'm very analytical, but I can be direct when I have to.
You do, you do have some green.
I'm gonna pull up Patrick Kelly.
Yeah, I felt, I felt pretty good about that.
You felt seen?
Felt, I felt seen, I did.
Did it describe you?
It, it does, yeah, I think so.
Okay. Mr. Meredith?
Fairly accurate. I'd say I'm always striving to be more I, but I'm always working on that, but, um, I have to kind of balance what, what I do at work and what I do here. It's kind of a interesting dichotomy, but.
That's a good point. Uh, so, the work, Alan Sims, is one thing, and at home, I'm a different person.
I was gonna say, that's really what surprised me about you, cause I've been to, I've been to like retreats with you before and he's, I'm, I wanna be in bed by eight thirty. He's all I when we go out, all I.
After, after the sun goes down, he's all I.
Hundred percent I.
And the disco shoes come on.
That's right.
Mr. Troyer?
That's what I expected.
Oh, okay. It, it accurately describes you. Okay, so what I'm gonna do now is just, um, you went. So, I pulled up, you have the ability to create your group and make an assessment, but I wanted to pull up the Lewisville City Council. Look what you came, look what, uh, you all clustered in a certain area. There was a clustering as a group. You all like to get things done as a group.
I am curious, I'm sorry, I bet we have the same question.
No, I didn't have a question. I was gonna make a comment about how I present, like, so with the retreat, at the beginning of every presentation, I would give you the, the quick and dirty, like, this is what the, what the, what we're about to tell you, this is the end result, this is what we're seeking. It's because I, I know that most of you have tendencies towards D, and so to sum it up at the very beginning helps you kind of, you know, so this is regularly used by our team.
Is this, I'm sorry for bringing that back up again.
Uh, you wanna go back to?
Where you saw the clusters.
Okay.
Yes, well, that's loading. The, the general question I have is when I think about groups of people, like, I expect you have sales folks that all kinda cluster in an area. You've got, um, you know, certain professions all, maybe doctors cluster in an area as well. I'm, I'm curious. I'm curious about when you, when you do this with other people in elected positions, do you see that cluster? I would think there's certain types of personality traits that try to, that tend to draw people to certain things that they do in life. So do you see clustering to be unusual for elected?
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll start over again here, so. I would imagine you have sales folks. You, you do a group of sales folks. You'd probably see clusters of sales folks.
Yes.
You have engineers, you see clusters of engineers.
Yes.
Is that the, the typical grouping you'd see in that, that right, that top DI for people in elected positions? Cause I think there's, is it just hit and miss?
So, I will say that, um, or how do I say, you have a group of people, your cluster is stronger in to get things done, the more active, more, or, that's your cluster. Some clusters are more questioning, reserved, analytical, but that is a, that's a stronger cluster.
Okay.
That's my perception.
Right.
Yes. Okay. I'm going to, um, move.
Yeah, when, when I look at these, Patrick, when I look at these, that you, uh, there, there's a lot of reasons for people to get into public service, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You'll see, you know, conscientious and steady folks that, you know, they're wanting to create stability, they're wanting to, you know, the details of, of, as the budget, are we spending the money right? So, um, you, you definitely get that. I think you might, in higher levels of government, you might see more I's and more D's, um, just because of the, the social constraints that, that, that that higher profile creates.
And the other contributing are, are the boards and commissions and things more behind the scenes. We don't have that kind of out in front of people kind of aspect.
That may shift, but I, I, I typically, I'll, I'll see, you know, you may see more. For me, and when I'm traveling and talking to folks, mayors tend to cluster a little bit differently. Um, but city council, I've seen all the way around. And, and I think that makes for, I think that makes for a good, good dialogue.
Yep.
The hard parts of campaigning.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what I'm gonna encourage you to do, the explore, and I, I, I think you have the information as far, how to access, but I've pulled up my personal, uh, profile. Uh, this is page three. I thought it was very, uh, some good information. I think you, you've seen this. Overview of your DISC dot. You heard a little bit about that. Mine says I'm strong as that, as that dot goes toward the s- uh, center. It, you pick up more of the different styles. This is, there's just, I would just encourage you to, to drive. I'm gonna move down to, um, page sixteen. Cause this is important. Uh, let me see. Build better relationships. So, if you're working with somebody that's a D, connecting with a D, there's some instructions as to different things that you can do as far as connecting with a D. And it says, take the time to listen to their opinions and knowledge on and on. I won't go into this for the second time, but there's, I would encourage you to explore this cause there's tons of information here that you can access. Connecting with an I, this is, show them that you share their enthusiasm. Connecting with, um, an S. Avoid coming across as, uh, too rash or too impatient. And connecting with a C. Avoid pressuring them for an immediate action, cause they're analytical. But anyway, I would encourage you to explore your profile. Lots of good information. I thought it was interesting that, uh, you all, how do you would say this? Saw the sense that it was spot on and, and its assessment of you. I know you've taken it a few times. I've kinda surprised. It's not a hundred percent, but I've been surprised that it's very similar. But anyway, uh, lots of information, your DISC style, your colleagues. This is something I would encourage you to do, to set up a group, and you can put as many people in it as you want. Um, get advice. Connecting, collaborating. Workplace, we, we covered some of that. What drives you, you and other styles, build better relationships, on and on, and DISCology. So in the interest of time, I'm gonna shorten that, but it gives you a sense of how you are and how to work with each other. And I was pleasantly surprised, uh, you were dead on target as far as the, you even finished it ahead of time. That's the, that's the D's in the group.
Alright, you ready for the next one?
Yes, let's move to the next one. So, I'm gonna ask you a question. You are at, um, a TML conference. And you're leaving your room, and you're getting on the elevator, and somebody sees your badge that says Lewisville. And they say, well, tell me about Lewisville. What do you say? She's gonna bring up some easels, uh, and I'm gonna record the things you say. And I, I talked to you yesterday about a couple of things to look for. And, and you got this, fifteen, twenty seconds on the, on the elevator. What do you tell them about Lewisville? Can you see that? Okay. Alright. Yes. Tell me, Lewisville was?
Existing.
Existing, okay.
Small.
Small.
It was the workhorse of the county.
The workforce?
The workhorse of the county.
Of the county, okay. Lewisville was?
Tight knit, yeah.
What else was Lewisville?
A long way from Dallas, back then. I mean, everybody who described it.
It was the center of Dallas.
What else was Lewisville?
I didn't understand the instructions, I think.
Okay.
Cause I took, I, when I said, what was it, that's to me. What was it to me? What is it to me? And what will it be to me? What do I want?
Yeah.
So this answer's gonna be completely out of context. Well, for me, when I got here, it was just another city. I'm a army brat. I moved to all kinds of places. For me, it was just, it was just Carroll, it was just Carrollton. It was just another place that, it's gonna be a temporary home.
Okay.
We planned to move here for two years, move to a coast, so it's just a, just a city. That's all it was.
I mean, we're just looking to take, taking a look at the past of Lewisville. And what was Lewisville? In the past.
What's that?
Solid frame, makes sense to me.
Yeah, that, that's folk, that's a Patrick centric kind of thing, right? Yeah.
What else was Lewisville in the past?
It was innovative, actually.
Okay.
For its time.
Was it diverse?
Yes.
Agricultural roots.
Pardon me?
Agricultural roots.
Agricultural? Sleepy? Do we have an accurate description of the past of Lewisville?
I think so.
I'll take it.
Okay. Today, what is Lewisville?
Moving forward.
I would say, uh, welcoming. I kinda took this from, uh, the Reflections book, uh, with Mayor Wayne Ferguson. He's quoted in there saying, you know, Lewisville welcomes you when you come in, when you get here and you can't slam the door on the next guy who, who wants to move in, and we want to be a part of the community and, and contribute to the growth of the city. That, that's, that's a, something that always sticks with me that I think is true.
What else about Lewis? What, what is?
Yeah, it's my home now. It's my home, it's hometown, yeah.
It's home.
Mm-hmm, it is home.
You went from just a city to now it's home, okay? What else about Lewisville?
I think it's the birthplace of Flower Mount. It's the birthplace of Island Village.
Okay.
Without us, they wouldn't be.
They're my favorite suburbs. Of Lewisville.
Lewisville is today. So we went from the past, now to the present? What is Lewisville today?
I think, I think we, uh, we balance growth and history. As far as I like to say, we're, we're the biggest small town you're gonna run across.
I heard one of you all told me that Lewisville was blue collar. Is that true?
I think that's true, yeah.
In a, in a proud, proud way. A lot to be proud of for that, absolutely.
I'm absolutely proud of that.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I, I would say we're very fiscally responsible.
Okay, I'm just-
I would, I would say we're real.
Okay. I'm just citing some of the things you told me in my interviews.
Yeah. We're not pompous, we're not elitist. We're authentic people.
Okay.
It's a tight knit community. I mean, we have a hundred and thirty thousand plus, and we try to, like I said, we're welcoming, but it's tight knit where people from all over come up and, and, and talk to us and, um, you know, and we know, we know each other. You know, people who are involved, we, they know us and we know them.
We look out for our neighbor.
Okay. There was a story about the three bears, not too small, not too big. Lewisville's-
Just right.
Lewisville's family.
Family. Is this, is this a, is this Lewisville?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Now I want you to think aspirationally about the future. Lewisville will be aspirationally.
Thriving.
Place to be. Place to be.
A place to be. So, I like to think, where do you want Lewisville to be when you grow up?
I, I want it to be a place that is, um, has a little something for everybody, all, you know.
All encompassing.
All, all stages of your life that, that it has something for everybody.
I think when we interviewed, you said you wanted it to be a place where your children would, will come, would feel comfortable about living here.
Yes, not, it, it, not just comfortable, but excited about living here.
Yeah, and choose to live here, right?
Yes.
To live in.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would say, uh, will be a place that, that has a bright future.
And will be multi-generational. In my case, in my family's case, it's multi-generational.
Multi-generational, okay.
I like to think when people get asked where you're from, that it's not Dallas, well, Lewisville. I wanna, I wanna hear people say, it's Lewisville, it's outside of Dallas. You know, it makes a difference to me.
Yeah. I don't say outside of Dallas. They say, well, where is Lewisville? I say, well, Kate, look at a trophy that holds Dallas up, we're the base.
Alright.
I think it's more, more pride in conveying where they're from. Yeah, pride of place, perfect, yeah, that's it.
What else do you want Lewisville to be?
A leader in sustainability. That we know, we know how to build a city that, that is not staring at a financial cliff or having, having issues with retaining good people or, you know, has blighted neighborhoods that we just haven't been able to get around to.
So it's supposed to be more communal and structured?
Yeah.
I think it's a non-judgmental place, which welcomes more people in.
What about, um, uh, when I was thinking sustainability, you were talking about, I don't know if you were talking about the nature or anything like that.
Oh, I, I think we continue to embrace that.
All encompassing, yeah. I think we're a place that continues to build on our foundation and not forget it. We use it as a catalyst. We don't push it aside.
Right. We use that to, we use that to drive our innovation. You know, it's that whole forward looking, but still respecting what we've got in the past.
Exactly.
Anything else aspirationally about Lewisville?
I, I would hope the city would be a, would continue to have good governance. Um, where, where you have a city council that puts the city first. Uh, where you have, which allows for businesses to thrive and people to, to love living here. I know that's a lot, but.
It's the future, man.
Yeah, and I mean, like, I look at our past and like, we had, the thing that's rare here that I, that I saw is we had people who had over thirty years' experience in working, and that's not, anybody who's in Gen X knows that's not a reality anymore. But what we've seen is the stability of leadership and, and I hope that we can mimic that as best we can, uh, going forward, because that's what keeps this, keeps the city going. You don't have to write that down, but. Yeah, yeah.
He, he said a word, stability. Lewisville is stable. We've always been stable. Stable and consistent.
Resilient.
Resilient, there you go.
I was looking for my notes, cause some of you, when I asked you what was your vision for Lewisville, you had a lot of different thoughts about the future of Lewisville. Just trying to pull out that, I'll find it later. Anything else about, uh, the future of Lu- Lewisville? If that's been done, then I've got one last assignment for you. Pretend we're gonna commission a local artist, a Lewisville artist. And we're gonna paint a picture. And we're gonna paint a picture of Lewisville. What absolutely must be in that picture. We're gonna paint a picture of Lewisville. What absolutely must be in that picture. Blank canvas. No.
Yes.
No. Are you enough? I'm horrible.
I was looking to say that.
No, we just wanna, what, what needs to be in that picture of Lewisville?
A lake.
A lake, absolutely. Lewisville lake?
Cotton, pecan, lake, train, gristmill.
Wow.
You get all that, Claire?
Cotton, pecan, lake.
Cotton, pecan, lake, gristmill.
Gristmill.
Oh, gosh, you're gonna list it?
Oh, no, I would.
That's, okay. What is that?
It's a bloat.
I'm a little concerned.
You're not on my pictorial team.
We'll just put it on there, we'll just put it on there.
Cotton, pecan, gristmill.
Pecan.
Gristmill, we had the first one.
What must be included in that picture of Lewisville?
Train.
The train?
Our depot. The depot.
Is this today or the history?
The history.
Okay, but I mean, we're just.
That's all the history I'm looking at.
We're just asking you to paint a picture of Lewisville, I don't know anything about Lewisville, and I, you gotta, you gotta paint me a picture of Lewisville.
Hey. Gotta have that pitchfork in there, we are the farmers.
I mean, you gotta have people.
Yeah, you gotta have people in there.
And when, I guess, if you're painting a pi- picture of people, it's people from all walks of life. Particularly in my mind, I'm thinking of like the, our, our kids that are in the Youth Action Council.
Yeah.
Like, coming, coming back by choice to, to take up leadership roles in the city.
So, I'm here that, that picture of Lewisville would be multi-generational families, right? That has to be included, right?
Draw a little person.
Little person.
Oh, yeah, just, just. Oh, yeah, just multi-generational families.
She's saying draw another little person next to that.
So, it looks like.
Gotcha.
Keep getting little.
So, when I think back to some of the things that are maybe older in the, in the, in our, our city, I think to the Macedonia Cemetery and the Fox Henry Cemetery, I think those would be nice to showcase.
So, do I have the picture of, of Lewisville?
I think you gotta put Leela on there.
Yeah, they say the nature, nature.
Okay. So, the artist is gonna draw a picture, you just gotta tell them what, what's gotta be on the picture. You gotta blank canvas.
I would think if we're going to use this to, to kinda showcase the city, you gotta have something at the Wayne Ferguson Plaza in it, that's a great space.
Somebody say the birds.
Birds, oh, the purple martins. Nice.
Can you draw roasting peanuts?
Roasting peanuts.
With the peanut factory.
Yeah.
Peanut factory.
It smells good.
So, largest employer.
Is that a cheeto?
So, largest employer.
Lewisville and Fed School this year. Mary Kay, Siska, I, I, something, something to our business community. We have, we have a broad business base.
Okay, all we have to say is a broad business base. So, we have the people. We have the communities. There are certain components of the community. Nonprofits, faith-based organizations.
Say, where's your five, mayor? You gotta get those in there, right?
Right.
Yeah, nonprofits, church-based, faith-based.
Non-pro, nonprofits, faith-based communities, education.
Business?
Business.
All right. Do we have the picture of Lewisville? Cause I'm gonna hand this over to, and we're gonna hire an architect, I mean, not architect, an artist and draw the pictures, so, so what you told me, will they paint the correct picture of Lewisville?
I think so.
Claire? I said pitchfork, the body farmers.
I can't do pitchfork, it's easy.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Big jaw man.
All right.
So, Mayor and Council, we're gonna, obviously, this, this actually, primarily this one over here, what it will be, will be the beginning of our kind of kind of vision for the future for 2035. Our ideas are kind of baseline, and then we'll get the public information back to you guys throughout that entire process. And Mayor, I think we're now ready to recap.
Gotcha, all right. Ellen, thank you so much for your time and direction, I appreciate you giving us a little different way that we can look at each other. I, I think it's important to understand that while these, these tools are, are interesting, and that definitely will get you kinda like what are, what people lean into, that folks have lots of skills all the way around, and it kinda depends sometimes on what the circumstances are, so which set of those skills they might be using at any given time. So, it's not to, it's not to put people in boxes, it's to help you understand how you might be able to better work with someone if you don't feel like you, you connect with them very well. So, I think that's what, where these tools work really in their best. So, thank you, thank you again, Mr. Sims, appreciate your time and your direction for the team. So, we have up next, retreat, re- retreat, 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 recap and takeaways with Claire. And I think there's gonna be some pizza, but we'll do it as kind of a working lunch, so why don't we do this, can we just take five minutes? And we'll take five minutes, we'll come back at thirty-seven, and we'll get, we'll get the re- recap going. All right, I think we're ready for the recap and takeaways.
Okay, well, Mayor and Council, obviously, the best thing for our staff is to get, make sure we are on the same trajectory that Council assumes we're on, and to make sure there's no misunderstanding of what we think are our takeaways. So, our takeaways that we believe we're moving forward with, with the short-term rentals is to proceed on March third, bringing some type of maximum number of short-term rental properties that can receive a permit. I think Council had stated they were interested in ranges anywhere between ninety to a hundred and fifty. Staff is looking at probably a hundred and thirty to bring back, but you guys can have that discussion later on March third and make that final determination. And we are going to be sending that ordinance to legal for review. We will be proceeding with researching density options and bringing that back to Council, that includes getting public engagement as part of that process. We also need to fix our slide, we had a typo in our slide, we had said a date of adoption of the prohibition ordinance was on two twenty-nine, it actually was two nineteen. Doesn't change the effective date, so the, the dates of the prohibition, temporary prohibition ending were all correct, it was just a typo. And then Council question that was asked was, were the bylaws, CCRs of the HOAs looked at? And we should discuss, this is part of an outreach effort. So, just to clarify on that, we, if the city's ordinance allows for something, and an HOA's regulations don't allow for something, we are not, we do not suddenly become more restrictive because of the HOA regulations, that would basically be letting a private entity dictate what our statutes were. But what we can do is make sure that people know, if we're in a HOA, we're aware of HOA regulations, we can let people know that they need to go through that. Anything else on that short-term rental that we missed? Okay, so then for I, twenty thirty-five engagement timeline, Council, I think, wants us to continue with the big theme, and we would proceed with the plan as presented, and the desire is to increase touchpoints with the community and really focus on engagement.
Yeah, and I, I think the key there is to continue with the big theme, but not the big categories.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, we're making sure that we're, if they fall into similar categories, great.
Right.
But not, not to, not to pigeonhole.
Absolutely. On the water rate structure and rate changes, we are under the, we are planning to proceed with conservation and rate philosophy, and then bring back to Council the discussion at Budget Workshop. We also will have, we will have the addition, we only address water, just to clarify, so there's a sewer side, we'll talk about that at a future date. We, I think we understand where we're headed with the re- Lake redevelopment project update, I'm not putting that on here, since that was discussed in executive session. Mall progress report and revised site plan, there was a desire to continue with the plan, but looking at incorporating potentially the current cupola historical markers and entertainment area and addition of condos. Anything else that I missed on that? Okay. Acquisition of parkland strategy and key parcel discussions, continue with the, the use of our LAPS process that we presented to you guys for land acquisition. It's not updated. Sorry, we had a couple others, I'm not sure why it's not updating. Okay, let me, let me read you the other ones that were in there. Move forward with potential partnership. We would begin due diligence of the property purchase and connectivity improvements with those LISD parcels, that's Vista Ridge Elementary, as well as the Lizdola property. Move forward with potential partnerships for the McDaniel's Master Planning, that's the property that's out by Railroad Park. Start community engagement in North Edmunds Neighborhood, and continue with the use of the LAPS process. Is there anything else? Okay. Yep, go to the next one. For affordable housing comparison, update and rehab, RFP, that was the title of the presentation, we would continue with the plan as presented. We would keep the NOFA eligibility, it currently requires eighty percent with a preferred sixty, but knowing Council wants to see sixty or below. Make sure to include a tie in creating jobs at a level to allow people to be self-sufficient in our economic development agreements and incorporate economic mobility. I think that was going to your comment, Patrick Kelly, Councilman Kelly. Centralized volunteer management, we're gonna move forward with the plan, we are looking into how we can incorporate court-mandate community service into this, and we'll try to fit into the upcoming budget. With co-care, it was, continue as presented. On forestry, progress and future, it was, uh, basically continue as presented, provide, provide specific details on potential UDC updates to protect the tree canopy. Move forward with residential tree planting program through PEP and branchout pilot. Research development of the commercial version of the Roots for Wings. And bring back discussion on standardizing park development agreements with a full briefing to Council. And then consider including YouTube videos for tree care. Is there anything else on there that we missed?
I think, um, there was a comment to make sure that, uh, UDC is aligned s- with, uh, commercial development for Roots for Wings.
Okay. I think we put protect tree canopy, but we need to, uh, ex- include that, what the mayor just said.
Double and triple check that the development standards push towards natives.
Mm-hmm. Even with, uh, like if the engineering site plan, I think that was what, what you're tying it to. If the engineering site plan said you have to plant, you know, a certain type of holly that's not necessarily, uh, water-wise.
Right.
We would allow that flexibility in our code to plant with our new planting requirements. Uh, retiree health insurance, pursue option four, bring back at an upcoming council meeting to implement, uh, budget the A D C. That's that annual contribution at a hundred percent annually. That was like a one million some odd, uh, cost annually. Make sure to monitor annually to ensure liability is manageable. And you are gonna see operating budgets impacted by that in the upcoming budget. And then monitor salary savings due to retirements. Anything else? And then on the twenty twenty-five unfinished items, strategic focus areas, we are changing medium-term strategic focus area from Business One Twenty-One Quarter Planning to implementation. We're gonna remove the four lowest scored items, uh, for future consideration, and we're gonna bring items fourteen to thirty-four to the Lewisville twenty thirty-five process. We will adopt short-term action priorities as presented, but modify interpretations of certain items to include Council comments. And that's it.
Awesome.
That's the conclusion, Mayor.
Council, anything that's missing off of that? Anything that you thought you heard that didn't get expressed at the end here? Comments, questions, concerns? Going once? Going twice? Good retreat. Is that it?
That's it.
Well, if that's it and there's no further action to be taken, we stand adjourned.